Good evening. All right, folks, I'm going to call this meeting to order, so I need everybody to be quiet. Thank you. I am going to call the Tuesday, October 8th, meeting of the Board of Selectmen to order, and we're going to begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we have a few announcements tonight. This meeting is being recorded by the local scene. Anyone intending to make an audio or video recording of this meeting should notify the Chair at this time, if anybody's recording. Nobody online. All right. Financial assistance applications are available on the town's website or by calling the Selectmen's office. For anyone interested in volunteering, there are several vacancies on various committees and boards, and we seem to always have openings. So if anybody's interested in donating some of their time, please take a look at the complete list of openings on our website at KingstonMA.gov. Also, take a look for other additional events or notices on our website at www.kingstonma.gov. I have a couple additional announcements. We've had, obviously, everybody here knows that there's been some roadwork on our roads this summer. I had asked the Water Department for an update. From what I'm told, all water services and tie-ins will be completed by October 10th, so we're getting close. Work remaining include, after that, we'll still need to do permanent trench repair paving and then overlay paving. So the permanent trench repair paving is anticipated to be completed by November 15th. The overlay paving, we can't do that right after the patching. That has to sit, so the overlay will not be done until the spring. But I'm told that will, the trench repairs are going to be much better than what we've got right now. So there's that. We also have, at our upcoming town meeting, some information about the MBTA Community District zoning bylaw for our town meeting. There's going to be an open house on October 28th here in Town Hall from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. You can come in and ask our town planner and staff about this bylaw and what it means, how it's going to affect us. So if anybody has questions, again, that's October 28th from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. right here. Any other announcements from the board members? No? All right. So before we get started with our appointments, we're also going to open up open forum. So if you were here last time, I had mentioned that we're going to be having a public hearing tonight, and that's going to be later on during our agenda. If you, if anybody wants to speak at open forum, please feel free, raise your hand if I call on you. I'll ask you to go to the podium. You can't speak from your seats. We would be able to hear you, but the folks online, we need you to be able to speak into the microphone so that folks online in our recording would pick it up.
Thank you very much. Pine Dubois with the Jones River Watershed Association and Jones River Landing on 55 Landing Road, here to beg you to reconsider some form of stop speed control on the intersection of Maple Street and Landing Road and the MBTA Railroad Bridge, where there was yet another crash on the 25th of September that only engaged about 12 enforcement officers and wreckers and so on and so forth, including the MBTA, because they weren't sure if the bridge was going to collapse. There was also an incident with a electric bike on Saturday where there was an injury and a bike transported by truck out off the property right in front of Landing Road. I do not understand why there cannot be a stop, at least one stop sign on Maple Street from the, for the traffic going southbound to the bridge, so they have a chance to redesign while they're traveling 50 miles an hour, maybe stopping first. And in the other direction, either at the bridge or somewhere, I still don't understand why there can't, that bridge can't be a one-way under the bridge like Elm Street was for 10 years. It would save, now I know that the police don't think that it costs any money for all of them to be there because they're all on duty, but they also weren't on duty going up to the high school to check the gun threat up there. So, you know, I just, I beg you, put it back on the agenda. Let's figure it out. Don't ignore it because a tragedy will occur. Near tragedies have already occurred, too many accidents at that location, including the sewer plant, the landing buildings, the 51 Landing Road building, the highway bridge. Please, put it on the agenda. Can we have something before the end of the year and have a discussion back with OCPC to figure out what the plan can be? If there's not a three-way stop, I don't care what the solution is. There has to be a solution. And it can't be a single, hey, if you read the sign, go 25 mile an hour in a densely populated area, you figure out what densely populated means. They're not, they're going too fast. All of them are going too fast. They're too distracted right now. They need help to slow down and pay attention, please.
All right, thank you, Pine.
Will you?
We'll definitely address it. Would anybody else like to speak at open forum? Anybody online? I can't see if someone's raising their hand or not. No? Okay. All right, then we will move on. Our first appointment tonight is awards and recognition from the Police Department. Chief Holmes, you have the floor. And while we're waiting, for those that don't know, Chief Holmes was just recently appointed this past winter, so he is new to Kingston, but he's settled right in, and we're already giving out awards.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, Honorable Members, Mr. Hickey, Ms. Tucker. For anybody who hasn't met me at any of these, I do talk fast, and I can see you have a full house, so I'll go as quickly as I can, but it's not dismissive of the importance of what we're doing here tonight. I appreciate the time on the agenda. I'm recognizing the men that you see before you for the department's letter of merit. The Kingston Police Department letter of merit is issued as sworn and civilian members of the department to recognize performance professionalism and acts in the line of duty that are measures of good public service, good police work, and a successful endeavor of a group or individual member of the department. Recipients of this award receive a written certificate. It's my pleasure to recognize before the Honorable Board tonight these members of the Kingston Police Department that you see here before you, who are working in the early morning hours of September 23rd, 2024. Those to be recognized, a couple of them are not here tonight, Detective Lieutenant Mike Scivera, Sergeant Zach Patricus, Detective Sergeant Steve Burner, Officer Craig Marshall, Detective Zach Francis, Detective Heath Howell, Dispatcher Mike Herrick, and Dispatcher John Schoestet. The interesting thing here for me is that ordinarily, I'd review matters and I would recognize them or recommend them for recommendation for recognition, but in this case, the Senior Sergeant Patricus is the guy that wrote everybody up for favorable work, and I'm recognizing him as well. But right now, he's in Florida, and he's battling a hurricane, so we're going to say a couple extra prayers for the Senior Sergeant, and he'll be okay down there, we hope. I have to note, too, that we're very thankful that nobody from the Kingston Fire Department, Pembroke Street Station, was hurt, or any other matter, member of the public for that matter. So upon receiving 911 reports of a group of male subjects who were banging on a door, wearing masks, and were armed, units were dispatched to the reported address. The suspects left the initial address and were headed to another address. They were encountered by Sergeant Patricus, who attempted to conduct a threshold inquiry in a motor vehicle stop. This resulted in a motor vehicle pursuit, and when the suspect ultimately lost control of the vehicle, he crashed into Kingston Fire Department Pembroke Street Station, striking a transformer and a generator that I believe Chief Douglas is still picking up the pieces from for some of the services that serviced that building. Consequently, the first emergency created several more emergencies, as the suspect fled into the woods, and his passengers remained on scene, and they had some moderate injuries. And the Kingston Fire Department station had filled with smoke, and there was an electrical event, an emergency taking place. While the driver was apprehended, he did require treatment for injuries that required in a hospital trip, and he was also placed under arrest. A street closure resulted to mitigate the emergencies at Kingston Fire. The Criminal Investigation Bureau was called in and ultimately tied major portions of the case together and all the moving parts that were involved. Some of the things that were mentioned in the recommendation for the recognition from the top here, Dispatcher Herrick kept the caller calm while dispatching officers and other units to another residence and stayed on the line with the call the entire time. He handled multiple calls and multiple radio transmissions by himself. The gentleman in the middle with the blue shirt, he's fast-moving, and if you can imagine what an octopus looks like when he's in there alone, that's what he looked like, I can imagine, because I've been there myself. Dispatcher Schoestet, I mentioned in my comments a couple weeks ago that he came back into dispatch to help out Mike without even being asked to do so, because he knew that it was really busy and there was some trouble happening here. He's an asset to the department, and that was noted as the, he's an asset to the department here and the other ones that he serves. Officer Marshall, while working a forced overtime shift, was described as giving 110% performance while doing his utmost to maintain safety. Sergeant Burner, Detective Francis, Detective Howell pitched in on the major incident. They were instrumental in coming in on short notice, and the assistance they gave was key in the investigation. All responders worked well and worked together as a team, and that's something I believe the town of Kingston should be thankful for. It is for these reasons that I'm proud to recognize you with the Kingston Police Department's letter of merit. Your actions maintain the highest tradition of policing and reflect great credit upon yourself and the Kingston Police Department. Congratulations on a job well done.
Now, do we have multiple cars going off? We have a lot of police here tonight, so hopefully no one's getting broken into. All right, we're going to move on to our next item, which is a joint meeting with the Board of Assessors to interview interested candidates. We have one to fill an opening on the Board of Assessors. Do you guys want to open your meeting? Call your meeting to order?
Move to reopen the Board of Assessors meeting, October 8th, 6:14. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, do you guys want to introduce Ken?
You can introduce him.
Okay. Here he is, he's right behind us here. Introduce Ken Stevens. Some of you might be familiar
Some of you might be familiar with him, he's done a little bit of town. I don't know if you need to take a seat up here, or, I don't know the protocol.
You certainly can, yeah. Yeah. So, we had a vacancy on the, the assessors, so we did open up that position and asked any interested candidates to submit their letter of interest, and we did get a letter from Mr. Stevens. So he's here tonight, we can ask him questions, and then as a joint, both, both the Board of Assessors and the Board of Selectmen will appoint that position until the next, next election.
I apologize. Anybody with a tan Jeep? That's your vehicle, that's your vehicle.
Green with a tan top.
So Ken, do you want to start off with a statement?
I think what I put in my letter to you all, it's in the packet, it says it all. Happy to read that into the record if you'd like that, but basically, I have been involved in local town, our downtown for 42 years, and about 20 out of that in service in one board or another. Most recently, the last eight years from 2012 to 2020, when I retired as the Town Treasurer. And actually, although it's not among those listed services, I did spend two years under contract helping my successor Carl Pike with the tax title. So I've been on the bench more or less for four years, and I'd like to get back in the game in some fashion. Not prepared to go full-time currently, but the Assessors' Office seemed like a good fit. I had thought about it from time to time, but when this came up, I thought, well, I should put in for this right now. So, right now.
Maybe we could alternate questions?
Certainly. Could I just make one quick statement, though? First, first of all, there's, there's an opening on the boards. Scott DeSantis was a cherished member of this community and also the board passed away. He, in case you didn't know what happened, I know we all have very busy lives. He was a heck of a guy, he cared about the town, he cared about doing what was right, and he was not afraid to tell you what he thought regardless of whose feathers it might settle or ruffle, but he always did it with the intent of doing the right thing for the community. He was greatly appreciated, he'll be greatly missed, and I just want to say thank you, and if his family happens to be seeing any of this, I just want to extend again condolences. I know we've all reached out, people who are privileged enough to have known him, but just wanted to let him know that he's not forgotten. Thank you, Scott.
Thank you. Do you guys want to start with questions, and then we'll alternate?
You can start if you'd like, it's fine.
I have questions, I'm thrilled that Ken threw his hat in the ring, and he, we spoke by phone earlier, I think late last week, and I'm very excited to have him join the Board of Assessors.
We are a small town, so everybody's worked with Ken, I think. And thank you for all of your years of service, Ken, and thank you for, for putting in for this. As I mentioned earlier, we have a lot of positions open in the town, volunteer positions for different, different committees, boards, et cetera, and, and a lot of people keep coming back, they try to get out and then they get pulled back in. So we're glad that you, you submitted your, your letter of interest. So I don't think we have any questions over on this side either.
The only question I'm curious about is, the term is a three-year period that he's filling, but will, will that be for that full term of that?
No, no, so it is until the next election, so that's, when is our next election?
And then it's a, and then it's a two-year term to fill that?
Right.
Seat. So when it's on the ballot in May, it'll be a two-year seat. Is that right, Keith?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I'd just like to also say I appreciate Ken stepping up to the plate, and fierce people that I called, he was the only one that had guts enough to jump to the, stand, stand up towards it, so, thank you.
Everybody loves the assessors.
Yeah, they sure do, yeah.
So do you want us to make a motion, or do you want that?
Do you want to make, do they have the potential motion?
I don't know if that's, is that for us to?
So that's how we've done it in the past. Doesn't mean you have to do it, because when you have a contentious vote, we've sort of relied on the people who have to sit with them to make the initial motion.
So you all can make the motion? It's your, it's your board, so.
Steve can make the motion. I'll just point out that this is the first time I've had the opportunity to meet Ken, I've heard great things about him, but I would also concur with the Select Board that, you know, we're the kind of person, from what I've heard about, that's done all these things for the town in the past, so just want to thank somebody for willing to step up to, to do the job, quite frankly. So I'll rely upon the recommendations I've heard and all those years of good service, so no need to ask a pointless question to hear myself babble.
I'm happy to make the motion if you want, Eric.
I'll make a motion to approve Ken Stevens to the Board of Assessors.
Effective immediately until the next annual town election?
Correct.
I got you.
All right, do they need to?
Second.
All right. And we don't need another, we, we're just gonna vote. Yeah, okay, so we're gonna, all those in favor?
Aye.
Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. It's unanimous.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Mr. Stevens.
Welcome to Fight Club.
Welcome back.
Do, can we make a motion to end our meeting?
Yeah.
Unless you plan on going somewhere else and continuing to meet.
No, I'm all good.
Move to exit public session, open session again, not to return.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you, Ken.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Board. Select folk.
All right, our next item is our quarterly update with Fire Chief Mark Douglas.
Good evening. Gonna go through this as quickly as I can, obviously you're fairly busy tonight. We'll start off with calls for service. Currently, we're 2,345 calls for service, that is since July. We do approximately 8.7 a day, and we project it will be about 100 calls over last year. I'm sure many of you see us buzzing about town a little more than you're used to, and that is for sure, the call volume is up. We're able to staff our equipment much more than we used to with the addition of, of new staff, so that is why you see us more than you'll see Duxbury Pembroke and some of our mutual aid partners. Of those calls, we currently, 814 are rescue and medical, 531 since July are other. And other could mean structural firefighting, could mean, pardon me, brush fires, or anything that's not fire, excuse me, rescue and medicals. We continue to see a growth in simultaneous calls, however. During this period, 1,194, two or more at the same time, three or more at the same time, 422, and four or more at 122, and those continue to be increases over previous years repetitiously. This year, our average response time slipped just slightly by a few seconds to six minutes and 26 seconds from the time you place the call until help arrives. And that is an average, there are some that are much, much shorter than that, there are some that are slightly longer than that. Mutual aid was provided to us 63 times since July. I'm sorry, we provided mutual aid 63 times and we received it 94. That is indicative of the call volume. Our personnel remain much the same, chief, deputy, administrative assistant, four captains and 22, excuse me, 24 firefighters. Recently, we had three recruits graduate from the Massachusetts Fire Fighting Academy in Bridgewater. Of the four we hired, one decided firefighting was definitely not for him, and he withdrew from the academy during the first week or so. After that, we advertised and were very fortunate to find a gentleman from the Lakeville Fire Department named Patrick O'Donovan, who is also a registered nurse, he was academy-trained, and he is an exceptional paramedic. He works in the ER at the social hospital, so he filled that position that was vacated, and he was an excellent, excellent catch. One of our new call firefighters, we've hired one or two new ones, Will Kopang, is going through recruit training now, the call volunteer recruit. He will be graduating in early November, he will then start department training, it takes a few months, and then he will be on the roster of call firefighters to respond to calls. We still do a significant amount of recall for emergencies, those multiple calls or simultaneous calls that I described require us, excuse me, require us to recall staff, and we do that on a fairly regular basis. This year, we did, I don't have a figure yet, but this year, we did add to our CAD system a tracking mechanism so that we can track how many times we recall staff. We weren't able to previously give you a good, a good number on that because of the way we tracked it, but we've corrected that. On September 3rd, firefighter Steve Campbell retired after 25 years of service to Kingston and close to 40 in the fire service. Steve's position has been filled by Elizabeth Yule, who was hired from that advertisement that we did for Patrick O'Donovan, and Liz started just a short time ago. Liz is a 17-year veteran paramedic, a military veteran as well, and most of her experience in EMS was in the city of Brockton, so she's certainly well-seasoned. I worked with Liz when I worked in the city of Brockton, and she is exceptional. Injuries last year were unusually high still, we have seven injured members, three members are still out on long-term injury, two of them have had surgery, and one will retire from his injuries, unfortunately. Our apparatus stays much the same as it has, we've got an engine on order, and the remaining apparatus is, as you've heard me say time and time again, gone over with CAP Plan or, or the other committees. Well, we're working to keep the apparatus in excellent condition, I will say that the, the cost of that has increased. Last year, we spent $161,000 on apparatus maintenance. The cost to have that repaired, the hourly cost, is $180 by our outside vendors, that's $180 per hour. So I hope, once Dan Cram retires from Highway, they move somebody else in, we can get them some certifications and try to relieve some of this pain of spending this kind of money on outside vendors for repairs. We'll see how that works out. Both stations, to move on to stations, both stations are in generally good condition, but will require continued maintenance and improvements as we've done in the past. As Chief Holmes alluded to tonight, Station 1 had a bit of a mishap, we're still, we still have a few open wounds in the station that our vendors are working to repair. A large part of that was electrical because of the fire that was caused by, or the multiple fires that were caused by the transformer being knocked over. It'll require some windows and a roof in the next few years, and those we hope to do when we do the addition, which we're working on. Station 2 will require replacement of some components as well, very small items, we've done a good job in the past few years at catching up on that. And the parking lot will be our highest priority there. As far as our capital projects go, Engine 1, which was ordered in May of '22, has had an extended delivery time for a multitude of reasons. That should be delivered this coming April, provided this hurricane in Florida doesn't do damage to the Ocala Plant. The brush breaker that was on order since May of '22, the chassis arrived at the manufacturer, that should be another six to seven months, and that will be delivered. Both ambulance rechassis are scheduled, one beginning in December, the other one will be following that as soon as that first one returns. Station 2 HVAC system replacement has been completed, that was ARPA-funded, and that is working well. Station 1's, oh, the station alerting systems, all of the components are installed, we'll work on a few remaining bugs out, that goes into service complete next week, and we change the way we, we dispatch from the stations next week or the week after. Municipal radio system, you'll hear a little bit about radios coming up. The municipal system that we installed for the out, what I call the outlying departments, highway, water, sewer, is uprunning and operating very well. Everybody's been happy with that, there's a few programming tweaks I want to make in that, but otherwise, that's been a very successful project. Police and fire conversions to digital is, that has been complete, and that is working as well as digital can. We do have some challenges that you'll hear about, I'm sure, when you review the warrant, because we did ask for some additional funding to make some repairs or some additional, add some additional components to cover the high school and some other areas in the western end of town. From the budget perspective, two items remain particularly challenging, injury coverage and vehicle repairs. Based on the injury numbers I gave you, we've expended $116,000 to fill the necessary shifts since July, so that's July to October. Vehicle repair costs, as I also said, have skyrocketed, and those are, are difficult to manage within the budget, but we were able to do that last year with only one transfer that was from a, for a transmission for Engine 3. Ambulance revenue, good news, is up approximately $271,000 from last year. If you recall, when you changed the, the billing amounts, the call volume combined with that increase is netted about $271,000 in additional revenue. Our planning, we continue to work with the architect for the, and the Police Department, as well as have a source to secure land and develop plans for the, the two stations, Police Station, construction of course, and then the addition to the Fire Station. We addition, also work with CAP Plan and the Finance Committee and you folks for regular scheduled replacements of apparatus and equipment. This fall, we have asked to approve ordering a replacement engine that will be assigned to Smith Lane Station. That is due on the CAP Plan in '27, '28, right in there somewhere. It's about a three-year delivery time, and again, there'll be more to come on that as we enter into those discussions. Aside from that, we're in very good shape with equipment, based on what we have in front of us and the project's underway. The next thing we'll have to discuss will be the replacement or remount of the 2019 ambulance that we bought with the KAZAC money, if you can believe it's, time has moved that fast. Fire prevention is a year-round activity now, and will continue those efforts. Move on to grants, firefighter equipment grants from the state this year, $18,999. That was put to, towards an SCBA fit test machine, so we can test our employees in-house rather than have a vendor do it, and save considerable funds from doing that, as well as replacing several of our gas tools with battery equipment. EMP, EMPG, Emergency Management Planning Grant, $3,500 was put towards a mobile, mobile data terminal. EMPG allows us each year to buy certain things off an, an equipment list that's provided by the feds, and what we do is we try to keep our mobile data terminals on a rotation, so if I get one every year, the oldest one goes, and that's been a very effective way of replacing it without coming to the town for funds to do that. Safe and Senior Safe Grants, those are directed at fire prevention, and we continue to get those, those are, have become competitive grants, which the deputy takes care of, and I give him a lot of credit for that, that's become a lot more work than it used to be. This grant cycle, we're going to ask to outfit our new firefighters with ballistic gear. Unfortunately, we are at that point where all of our staff has to be fitted with ballistic gear as part of our protective equipment. It is what it is, unfortunately. And we're, we'll be assessing some other grant opportunities. Reminder, online brush permitting, we now do online brush permits, you can hop on the town's website, select that. If you have any challenges with that, or you need somebody to walk you through it, we'd be more than happy to do that, just call the business line during normal business hours. Lithium-ion battery training has become also ongoing. For those of you who watch the news, you'll see a ton of issues with lithium-ion batteries, Teslas, and a multitude of electric vehicles that are challenging, as well as computers, e-bikes, and so forth. So this training has to be regular, and everyone has to be up to date, so we are going to move forward with an additional class this fall, and we're going to include our tow operators that are contracted to the town, as well as some of our police officers. I've talked to Chief Holmes about that, and it makes great sense to have the Police Department involved, since they respond to the incidents with us. On the EMS side, we've been, had, we have seen considerable stabilization in the price of supplies, which certainly helps the budget. That said, we are now being challenged with some additional requirements from the state, which will also challenge the budget, and that is primarily around active shooter training. The Office of Emergency Medical Services is requiring us on a regular basis to do active shooter training. Previously, while we've done it and it is necessary, that was an option, it is now required. Having taken a few years off due to COVID, next year, we'll return to group training in the simulation labs at Pro EMS in Cambridge. We previously sent our EMS folks, which is the entire department, by group to the simulation labs. The simulation labs include some very high-tech robots, frankly, mannequins that they can do various medical procedures on. At times, they even include cadaver labs, that's deceased humans, so that they have a great opportunity to learn, and that's been an absolutely outstanding way to get to build teamwork and to perfect the skills that we, frankly, those that use our service all enjoy. So we will return to that this year. So goals for the upcoming year are very, very straightforward, training, training, and more training. Then the amount of retirees I see in the next year or so, as well as the ones we've had, require us to build back a team that I'm slowly losing, frankly. had, require us to build back a team that I'm slowly losing frankly. And that's not a negative thing. Folks have done a great job for us for 30 and 35, 40 years even, and they'll have a well-deserved retirement. Many of them, I will compliment my staff, have spent a great deal of time with the new people to transition as much information and as many skills as they have or are able to, to the new people, and I think you'll see a great team as a result of that. In closing, I'd just like to say thank you to everyone, all the boards, committees, yourselves, the public. We've enjoyed great support and I hope we've provided the service you expect and enjoy. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. I actually have a question before you, before you go. Just a quick question. The brush burning online application, is that for, never had one before, first time doing it, you can still do it online? You don't have to go?
Right, everybody can do it and has to do it online. If you need help, the admin, you can come in and the admin will walk you through it and help you with it. But they all have to be done online.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. Any other questions?
I think there's a $10 fee?
Ten.
$10 fee, which covers the administrative costs.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. All right. So now we're moving on to the hot topic tonight that I think a lot of people are here for. The public hearing for the discussion of continued winter maintenance of our unaccepted roads. So I'm going to go ahead and open up the public hearing. Before we open it up and call on folks to speak, I'm going to go through and read some updates to some of these roads and what's been done, what's been satisfied and what hasn't. And then we're going to discuss this and our options and then I'm going to open it up for comment and then after that, then we'll have further discussion and a motion and a vote, I would assume. So at our September 24th board meeting, we discussed a number of roads in town that are unaccepted. So these are not roads that are owned by the town and in many cases, the town has been maintaining these roads in the past. But moving forward, we had, a year ago, we had put in place a policy where the roads needed to meet minimum requirements set by the highway department in order for the town to continue maintaining those roads.
Can I just ask?
Yeah, go ahead.
When you say maintaining, you just mean plowing, right?
Plowing, correct.
Because we're not actually maintaining the roads.
Correct.
Okay.
Good, good, good catch.
I just wanted to make sure I was understanding.
Yep. Winter maintenance.
Okay, thank you.
So there were, there were quite a few roads here, but, but, and a lot of the residents on these roads or owners have been speaking with the highway department, working towards making the appropriate fixes to the best extent that they could. We did have several issues that looked like they're going to be a little bit tougher to get done in a short period of time. A lot of folks were upset, and I, and we get it, that you didn't have enough notice. So we didn't send out communication a year ago when we put this policy in place, so a lot of folks were just finding out about it the beginning of September, end of August, whenever our letters did, did finally go out. So there was some discussion about, you know, there are some things we could do, maybe we could put off some, some of the items. But let me just read through some of the, the updates. So since that September 24th board meeting, there have been changes to the conditions of some of the roads, so they're now eligible for winter, winter maintenance. So the following roads have already made the necessary improvements required to continue. That's Paradise Lane, Tree Farm Estates, Off Tarkilm Road, Sunrise Drive, Kings Grove Lane and Grandview Avenue. And Keith, correct me if I'm wrong on any of these. Four more roads have had improvements began and are expected to be completed that will allow for the winter maintenance to continue. And that's Randall Road, Waterview Lane, Adams Drive and Off Second Brook. Then we have two roads with fences in the right-of-way. So as a compromise, we, we could allow the homeowners on Post Court or Cobb Avenue another season of winter maintenance, with the understanding that if the fence isn't moved out of the right-of-way by October 1st of 2025, so a year from now, there would be no winter maintenance on those roads, maintenance plowing for that season. And this is coming from the highway department's request. Then Meadowbrook Road, Podberry Lane and Bradford Road are dirt roads that need potholes filled. In the past, the town would deliver surplus dirt to a location on the side of the road that residents could then move to fill the holes. So one of the things we could do is if we're willing to allow materials to be delivered this year and the potholes filled, then the road could be maintained for this winter. The four remaining roads, Country Club Way, Cedar Street, Russell Pond Road and Stagecoach Drive are paved roads that are either in poor condition or have raised manholes that need to be addressed in order for winter, winter maintenance plowing to, to occur. The owner of Country Club Way has spoken to Mr. Bazler and our highway department and has indicated that he intends to make the necessary repairs. Residents of Stagecoach Drive cannot reach an agreement to address the road deficiencies. Residents of Russell Pond Road have been communicating with the town planner and street superintendent. They believe that the town owns the road and should be maintaining it. There's been no communication with the property owners on Cedar Street this year, so that's it. So a lot of these roads are off our list and for the time being, we don't need to change any part of our policy for the first, what is it, 10 roads that are on our list. Paradise Lane, Sunrise Drive, Tree Farm Estates, Kings Grove Lane, Off Tillkorn Road, Grandview Ave., Randall Road, Adams Drive, Waterview Lane and Off Second Brook. The remaining still either have issues that they're working on or some that we would be asked to waive it for another year. So does the board have any questions that maybe Keith could answer or, or any comments before I open it up to public comments?
When you say there's been no communication with the Cedar Street folks, it's just they haven't responded to the letters they received?
That's my understanding.
Okay, all right.
Yeah.
Okay.
Any questions, comments? I mean, again, like, like I said last time, you know, we obviously, I don't want to make this difficult, but we have to look out for our town. And again, for those that weren't here last time, we're having a very difficult time getting private plow drivers to work for the towns. I don't know what the reason is. I mean, it, it could be a myriad of things. I mean, for one thing, trucks are double what they were four years ago.
Insurance is very expensive as well.
Insurance is very expensive, but just the trucks replacement costs on, and repairs have gone through the roof. So I think it's, and we've raised our rates. We raised, I forget what they were raised to, but we, we did raise them to try to lure people in. And last year we had it, luckily, we didn't have, I don't know how many times they plowed, if they plowed at all last year. Luckily, we didn't run into any issues and maybe it'll be another warm winter, one can hope. But it is a serious concern and getting people to, just to sign up and then if they're dealing with a small road where there are issues that they could damage their, their own private vehicles, that's, that's the problem.
Eric, also, just, just in the history of the, the private road issue has been an issue for like, well, longer than I've been alive. So, because I haven't been alive that long. But it's been a huge issue for a long time and roads not being maintained, that kind of like, whether it's a private road, if it's being maintained by the town, you know, kind of like this like limbo in between thing has been an issue for a lot of old towns throughout the, all the Commonwealth. And this has been something that people have been trying to deal with for a long, long, long time. And in the process of that, roads have deteriorated and sometimes haven't been, you know, kept up. And there could be a myriad of reasons for that. You know, you may not have an association, it may be owned by an LLC. You know, there's a lot of issues, there's a lot of issues with this. So it's, it's, I think it goes a little bit beyond just, oh, we can't find plowed, you know, plow drivers or the, the costs have gone up. It also comes down to during that time period, a lot of the roads have deteriorated and left us with a very tough situation where the taxpayers necessarily cannot afford to accept those roads and adopt them unless they've been brought to a standard, lest we bankrupt the town. Obviously, there's different circumstances to where that varies, depending on certain roads. So this is not, this is a, this is a very complicated issue that I think a lot of people have been trying to keep the can down the road for a long time. So I just want to make that, I mean, maybe I'm speaking myself here, but I just want to make, make that clear to everybody that it's not just about getting plow drivers and damaging plows. This has been an issue for a long time and it is fairly unique to older towns and older areas in the part of this, this part of the country. So bear with us as we try to get, you know, navigate through this, but this has been something for a long time, nobody's wanted to tackle and we're here to tackle it and we're going to find a way, whether it's tonight or it's next month or it's this next year, we're going to tackle this issue and that's, that's our, we have to. So it's going to be messy and it's not going to be easy. So I just want to make everybody clear of that.
One of the things we talked about in our last meeting too, is that when we discussed this policy back in August of 2023, we talked about a bylaw to help residents who live on private roads get their road accepted by the town. So giving a process and a bylaw for that road acceptance was part of this policy, it just, it didn't pass town meeting. So now we have a policy on whether or not to plow private roads and what the standard is for that, to make sure that not only the private road is protected, but also the town equipment. But the process that we tried to adopt through that bylaw wasn't accepted by town meeting.
Yeah, because-
And we want to bring it back.
Ultimately, the, the idea would be to accept roads, take them from, you know, pub, private to public and to be able to just, you're on the rolls. There you go, you know, you're part of the system. In order to do that, you have to get to the system, that's what Kim was alluding to, which was part of last year's town meeting. So I think, I, I think the springtime meeting will probably be something that is a big, big significant part and I hope everybody's there for that because that, that's the, if you want to look at like, what's the end goal, it's to be able to find a way to get to the, to where those are adopted into being public roads.
To clarify, Eric, did you say you would provide the material for Meadowbrook Road?
Oh, I'm sorry. Could you go up to the microphone? Sorry, just the folks, the recording can't pick you up.
John, Eric, Meadowbrook Road. Did you say you would provide the material for the road?
That's the proposal.
Well, that's a proposal, so that's just something that's available for us to do. So we would need to make that, that, that motion and, and vote on that here tonight.
So town staff is recommending that is a way to get through this particular winter season, they're saying as a-
I'm the maintenance guy on our road, so-
Okay.
And, and another gentleman.
So what our highway department is suggesting is for this season, in order to take care of those potholes, perhaps the town could supply some of the material for you to be able to fill in those potholes.
So I can call Paul?
That's, this is what Paul is suggesting.
Thank you. Well, we need to vote on it tonight, so, yeah, so nothing's done yet, but-
And we're going to open the public hearing in a minute.
Yeah, and, yeah. Go ahead.
Well, before we open the public hearing, do we want to, obviously, anyone can say and talk about anything, but do we want to have this in three sections since that's kind of what we're looking at? Where we have Post Court and Cobb Ave., Cob Ave., Meadowbrook Road, Podberry, Bradford and then the other four.
Yeah, no, I think that makes sense.
Just so, just so we're able to focus on a portion of it.
So you guys can't see all the stuff that's in front of us right now, can I just, so the first set of streets that we're talking about is Post Court and Cobb Ave. There's a fence that makes their road too narrow for the plow. So yes, some of the private contractors could fit the pickup truck style. I don't know how many of those we have in town equipment, but the suggestion from town staff is for this year, perhaps the board should consider just waiving that for this year only, so they can deal with their fence next year. The second set of recommendations from the departments is to have Meadowbrook Road, Podberry Lane and Bradford, is it Street? I'm sorry.
Bradford Road.
Road. Have material delivered by the highway department so that that, those residents on those streets can fill in the potholes, which is what makes their road unable to be plowed currently. So that would get them through this winter season. And then Country Club Way, Cedar Street, Russell Pond Road, Stagecoach Drive, that, those are, those would be the only roads that I, I can see on this list that would not receive plowing this winter because, unless they have the repairs made by November 1st. So that's what we are looking at when, when we're kind of looking at our papers. I just wanted to make sure that folks in the room, you guys know kind of what we're being presented with as kind of a middle ground, I guess?
And everyone else's roads is presumably accepted now. So if you were on a list and now you're not. And that's not to say feel free to stay and talk, but your road is, if your road wasn't just listed, you're already fine.
Can we speak?
Hold on one second, just, just one moment.
I'll check, I'll check that list while you guys, do you want to open?
Okay, so I think what I'm going to do is I'm going to open up the public hearing. At first, we're going to talk about Post Court and Cobb Ave, so if you have something to say about those two, just raise your hand.
Move to open the public hearing?
We don't need them.
Okay, well, if you want to close it, it's just easier.
I can just close it.
All right.
Does anybody want to discuss Post Court or Cobb Ave?
This is Bill Torcasso from online. I don't know how to request the floor.
You're doing it now, this is perfect, go ahead.
Okay. My name is Bill Torcasso. I am with my wife. I own 28 Cobb Avenue and my sense is that there's a great deal of goodwill from the residents of Cobb Avenue and that the concerns have all been about the short notice to take care of this. And the town's suggestion for waiving the requirement for a year and then, and within that time addressing the fence, I believe all the other issues can easily be dealt with by the residents of Cobb Ave.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else for Post Court or Cobb Ave? All right, seeing none. We're going to move on to Meadowbrook Road, Podberry Lane and Bradford Road. So if anybody wants to speak about those three roads, go ahead, Scott.
My name is Scott Bishop. I live at 158 Main Street in Kingston. My access and egress into and out of my house is on Meadowbrook Road, so while I do not reside on Meadowbrook Road, I depend on Meadowbrook Road to get in and out of my house. I will preface my comments with this. When we last spoke, there was quite a bit of, I can't say anything else but anger in terms of the process, in terms of the possibility of my neighbors who are elderly or, or families losing access to service. As I listened to some of the other speakers, the prospect of somebody who is disabled and has to get out for dialysis or somebody who receives elder services like Meals on Wheels, losing the ability to get that, albeit for a short time, is still unacceptable in my eyes. So I don't just speak for Meadowbrook, but I speak, you know, hopefully for other streets that are still going to have this problem. Now that said, and having had a cooling off opportunity, I am grateful to Mr. Bazler and to the board for offering options. But at the end of the day, after what I had heard the, at last month's meeting, taking into consideration the things that have to change for roads to become accepted, and the reason why it is being done, which is essentially to protect the town's equipment versus protecting the populace, is something that I still find unacceptable. I understand the expense of equipment. I just listened to the fire chief talk about how much we're going to spend to keep the fire department up and running. And I'm sure the police department and, and the, the building department and trees and parks, they all have the same thing, but at the end of the day, we do it. We don't say the fire department, don't go down that road, it's not paved. You may, you know, blow a tire on an ambulance. And that's an obligation that the town has to its citizens. I am not here to argue who should do what. I am here to offer suggestions and I am here to, to listen to, to other points of view. And again, this shouldn't be a contentious conversation. But it's only a contentious conversation with me because I want to protect the people that live on my street and that I've known for 30 years. So at the end of the day, I would use the phrase, just because you can do something doesn't mean that you should do something. And I understand that it's been kicked down the road, but for the protection of the people that need it the most, I would hope that we would come up with a reasonable solution to get the roads plowed. I could sit here and say, oh, you know what, there are threats, there are, you know what, would the town rather have a wrongful death lawsuit because an ambulance had to wait 20 minutes for a plow to get to somebody's house? Or does the, you know, does the town have an obligation because they've done it, you know, for the past 40 years? Or, you know, you've got this policy in place and it's changed and nobody, you know, that's not productive. So at the end of the day, I would simply ask- So at the end of the day, I would simply ask that cooler heads prevail, mine included, and that we be able to work this out and that, you know, everybody's foremost thought should be for the, the safety and wellbeing of the citizens. And that's all I got.
Thank you, Scott.
Can you respond?
Yeah.
We always have lots of applause in our meetings, right?
It's really nice, very cool.
I just wanted to mention, I think I said this last time as well, the goal is to get to as many residents as possible safely. So that's what we were trying to do in creating this policy. That is the goal. So I know it feels like we're trying to protect equipment. We, we need to protect equipment. We have 5,500 households to get to. So we're trying to get to as many as we can safely.
Anybody else for Meadowbrook, Potbury Lane, or Bradford Road? No? All right. Were you going to say something?
I was just going to mention that I don't see Franklin Street or Snavely Road in any of the recommendations. So I wasn't sure what, where those stood and I didn't know if we wanted to find out.
You know, those are the last two that are on, on this list. There's one home on Franklin Street and two homes on Indian Pond, but that wasn't in this, the list of, of roads that were being taken care of.
So the, the policy, the policy has been for years that, that we don't plow roads that have less than three, or three or fewer homes on them.
So they've not been plowed before anyway?
I believe they've been plowed before. What the Streets Trees and Parks Superintendent is suggesting is that that has been a longstanding practice that should end as well.
We need to, we need to get to the bottom of that. And we won't tonight, that'll be a separate.
Okay.
Is there anybody here from, there's only three people. Franklin Street or Snavely Road? No? Okay, so we're going to move on to Country Club Way.
Hello, excuse me?
Yeah.
Hi, this is Peter Baird, 109 Summer Street. I just wanted to speak to Bradford Road.
Sure.
The list of houses on Bradford Road shows two. There's actually three. Although my address is 109 Summer Street, our driveway, the only access to our driveway is from Bradford Road. And so we didn't get notice of this meeting or this issue until, you know, yesterday indirectly. So just wanted to get our address added to the Bradford Road list. And I understand that probably the, the issues are, are getting worked on. Or so that our road will get plowed.
Okay. Yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll talk to the, to the, what?
It's similar to what Scott experiences as well, where his address is on Main Street, but the driveway is actually off of Meadowbrook. So it's a similar situation.
So we'll, we'll talk to the highway department?
Exactly, thank you.
Yep, thank you, thank you so much. Okay, so the last grouping is Country Club Way, Cedar Street, Russell Pond, and Stagecoach.
And it does sound like Country Club is going to be situated, it's really the other three.
Right, it's really going to be Cedar Street, Russell Pond, and Stagecoach as we outlined here in this. Anybody want to address these roads?
As a reminder, the owner of Country Club Way said he plans to address the issues that were raised.
Yeah. I'll call you next, hold on.
Brian Tartaglio on 6 Russell Pond Road. I was not at the last meeting and just got noticed through the mail regarding this whole situation. I've been a resident of Russell Pond Road for about almost 10 years now. And my first question I would ask, it seems as if Kimberly kind of brought up this question at the beginning of this whole thing about maintenance regarding it being to plowing. I guess my question would be, does the town do any other kind of maintenance on private roads? So the confusion I would say with Russell Pond Road is that none of the residents on this street know that the town has not been maintaining this road or that it was a private road. At least two of the residents have been there since the street was created. We also have two houses that are on Indian Pond, that their driveways are on Russell Pond. So it's not just six houses being affected, it's actually eight. So I guess my, my confusion is that since I've been there in 2015, there has been maintenance done to my street besides snow plowing.
So it might, unfortunately, our highway department superintendent is not here tonight. It could be that they were doing something with water or sewer or it could have been some other work that was being done under an easement, not the actual road itself. So the state law says that, that taxpayers cannot expend money to work on a, on, on a private road other than like it's an easement. It would be like the town, you know, adding on to my garage.
Right, so they have infrastructure, you guys have infrastructure on our road and it needs to be addressed.
We have to fix it.
We have to fix it, correct. And that's exactly what I assume has been done.
Yeah.
The problem is, is that most of the issues on Russell Pond Road that are going to affect us from being plowed are due to stuff that has been worked on by the town that has now deteriorated to a point where it needs to be repaired. And now it's being told that Russell Pond Road residents live on a private road, which is not noted on any of our deeds and has always been advertised when the properties are sold as a public way, that now we're supposed to be paying for these repairs. And we're only notified, I don't know, a few months ago, that we had to have it done by November 1st in order to have our street plowed. And again, speaking to the gentleman earlier, we have elder people on our street that would need possible assistance. And if we can't get these done by November 1st, that we're going to not be plowed. I would, you know, ask that the town at least try to make temporary repairs as they have done in the past around these particular spots before plowing because there's evidence on our street that this stuff has been done numerous occasions. You can see from the different colors of the pavement patches that have been done. So there have been attempts to repair this stuff and the town's been maintaining it. So our problem is that nobody is aware that this road was ever private. We are all under the assumption that it's always been maintained by the town and it belongs to the town. There might be some confusion whereas Russell Pond Road at one point was supposed to be an entrance into Country Club Way and was owned by Country Club Way, but then was sold off and broke away from Country Club Way and maybe now isn't considered to be a private way because of that. So what we're asking from Russell Pond Road is to get some more time to figure out what's going on if the road is actually private and what we have to do in order to go forward to maintain the road if that be the case, or take advantage of having the road made public by the town, or hopefully coming to some conclusion that the, the town already is owned by the, that the, the road is already owned by the town and that this is just a, you know, something that got overlooked somehow. But because like I said, at least two of the residents have been there since the beginning of the street being put there and they have no idea that this town, this road was ever private.
Yeah, go ahead.
So the road acceptance process is actually a fairly detailed legal process where it has to, the roads have to be brought up to a certain standard before it can go to town meeting to be accepted by town meeting.
Sure.
So if town meeting hasn't voted to accept Russell Pond Road and it's not in any town meeting that's been voted, it's not a public road. It's publicly available, meaning you can drive on it, it's not gated or anything.
Okay.
But it is up to the people who live on that road to maintain that road. It's, it's considered a private way until the town accepts it. And it's a very specific process. And the reason we tried to get that bylaw passed was to make that process easier so that we could help, the town could help guide residents through that process of, hey, I've got a private road, I don't know where to start, what do I do? We had this bylaw that was like, okay, you can work with our staff, they'll help you navigate this process. They'll help you figure out how to do potentially like a betterment where you could pay a certain amount per year to bring your road up to standard and then get it accepted by the town. It just didn't pass. So that leaves us here where the planning board was recently talking about, and I think the zoning board of appeals was talking about it too, incur, actually forcing potentially, when new roads get built, they have to put up a sign hopefully that now says, "Private Way." So there's never a question when people are moving into new neighborhoods that this road isn't accepted by the town yet.
So I guess I would ask then if in a suggestion to extend this or possibly if anything, being a contractor, I can say that if I do poor work, nobody's going to hire me again. So due to the fact that the town has done work on the street and the areas that need to be addressed in order to be plowed are kind of deteriorating where they did their work, maybe you guys should cover it this time and get it to a standard where it's acceptable. And then from that point on, the people on the street would then be required to maintain the street from that point on. Or go through the process of getting it accepted by the town as a public way that you guys would continue to do that.
So this is just me talking, but, but Keith, what I would, I, I think what I would like to do is not make a decision on this road tonight. What I'm wondering is if we can get the history from the water department, sewer department, highway department, when it was, when it was touched by the town, you know, how many times it's been paved or patched?
We did meet with the highway, the guy from the highway department. He did mention that his department had worked on a double catch basin located at the end of the cul-de-sac. Other than that, he was not aware of any of, of the other repairs, even though he could, by being on the street with us, testify that there were other repairs and mentioned it could have been by the water department or one of these other, so he didn't know and he couldn't provide that info for us.
We don't have a, a lot of towns and cities have a DPW and it's all under one and everybody knows. But here we have highway department, water department, sewer department, and they're separate. So he wouldn't necessarily know what was going on with the water department. So I don't know if there's a way for us to find out when stuff was done, you know, who did the work, that, that sort of thing on, on this particular road. How long is the road? I haven't been on it, I'm, I apologize.
My, my best guess, I would say maybe a total of 300 feet. It has a roundabout at the end of it.
Yeah. Yeah. Any other thoughts or questions? I mean, yeah, we're not making a motion on this one yet.
Well, and, and honestly, the, the motion that is before us for consideration just says that we're not going to plow if the repairs are not completed by November 1st. It doesn't mean that we couldn't, if the situation changes or information is received, that that couldn't change. It's not going to snow, hopefully, that early, anyway.
Sure.
Halloween.
I know, it has happened.
Just wanted to, you know, at least put something out there from Russell Pond Road because as far as we were concerned, our big thing was that nobody was aware of it. Even people that had been there for so long. So it was kind of just a shock to the, the residents. So we want to address it, but, you know, we just want to make sure that if we're going to be responsible for it, I mean, at least I'd want to pay for something that, you know, I didn't create the issue.
Right.
So, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Richard Loring, 30 Turmott Street. But my driveway is actually off of Randall Road. I actually own one whole side of Randall Road from Turmott Street to the dead end. But I did not get notice either. And as the gentlemen before me have spoken, it's important that we maintain access to the people who live out there, not just my driveway. But there are four homes out there, there's two elderly out of the four, and they need to be serviced. The other thing about Randall Road that's extremely interesting is that it is a private way and was a private way. And the sewer department came in and took in their domain so that they could in fact run their sewer line down Randall Road to treat top condominiums because they had a failed septic system. So they came in with their contractor and did extensive work, destroyed one whole side of my trees and I now have a fence that isn't in anybody's way and it's fine, doesn't bother me, been there longer than Tyler's been alive, so I'm aware of those as well. But the important part is, one of the things that Paul talked to one of the neighbors about was, you know, some potholes and a catch basin that is now up a little bit because the road has settled. The road has settled because it was dug up to approximately 25 feet in depth so that they could put the sewer in to service a condominium that's down around the corner and just was an easy way to get the, the sewer to the condominiums. I don't believe the sewer department would have done it for the four homes that are on Randall Road. But now we're being told as residents of Randall Road that because the town, the sewer department, the water department, I know the water department, the sewer department excavated, took that land by eminent domain under an easement to put the sewer line in. Why are we as residents being told in order to get our street maintained, we have to do something that we, the town, did? Because whether it's sewer or water or highway, we are still the town. If we did it to benefit other people, then don't we as the town have a responsibility to maintain it to a level where people can be serviced? You know, we all have budgetary concerns. And again, the water department, I know, plows snow for the town of Kingston, working with the highway department. I still haven't figured out why the sewer department are so elevated that they don't use their trucks that are four-wheel drive, that are small pickup trucks that have plows, why they are not included in the town environment? So that in fact, if you need vehicles and you need manpower, we are basically, we, the town, are paying those employees. We, the town, should be able to put enough emphasis on public safety so that the town as a whole is working as, together as a whole, not as separate enterprise accounts. We try to be an active member of the town as a water department. I think the sewer department has the capabilities and the manpower and the equipment to maybe solve some of the short-term employee and equipment. So, thank you.
Thank you. Sir, did you want to speak?
On Country Club Way?
Sure.
Sure.
My name is Dan Maybrook, I'm at 240 Country Club Way. And I've been there for 23 years. And those roads are the worst roads I've ever been on in my life. It's a public hazard. We can't drive down them, we can't run down them, we can't walk down them. There's potholes everywhere. And when you say Mr. Tongsberg is going to fix these by November 1st, all he's going to be doing is putting a Band-Aid on it that's going to last a couple of weeks. As soon as a plow truck comes and hits one of those Band-Aids, it's going to pop open again. And when there's snow and ice and water in those potholes, we're going to land in them. I've already blown out a tire that is driving me out of my mind and there's nothing we can do about it. What does Mr. Tongsberg have over you, the board? I don't understand this. Why are we living in this environment constantly and nothing is being done about this?
That's not true.
I, I find
I don't know what
He doesn't have anything on us.
What is, the town, the town is doing the
We're the first, we're, we're the first group that's ever actually gone into litigation really against him. So actually, that's factually ridiculous. And, and then you have all the rights in the world to get a class action lawsuit against the person who owns that road. And you've had a long time to do that. And I know I'm not yelling at you, but if you're going to yell at our board and the boards before that.
I'm not yelling, I'm just really frustrated.
Sure, I understand, I understand.
And the rest of our residents are frustrated.
I've been in a lot worse roads than that.
We are also frustrated.
We pay, we pay a lot of taxes in the town.
So do we.
Sure.
Same percentage as everybody.
And you know, it's just getting to the point.
Absolutely.
Well, this is, this is absolutely ridiculous.
All right, so I'm talking for a minute, so here's the deal. You've had a long time, the residents of that area have had a long time to do something about it, okay? They haven't. And there's been a lot of reports of people saying, oh, I don't, I don't want to do it because I don't have bad standing with Mr. Tongsberg, I don't want this and that. While we as a town have put up our money, right, taxpayer money, to go against him ourselves. When the residents of that, of, 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 of Indian Pond could have done it themselves for 30 years. So I always hear people come in, and, and if you bought a house three years ago, let's talk about the education part of it. It's been a long thing, it's been going on for a long time. You, you said 23 years, right?
23 years.
Yes, sir. So you've been in it for a long time and I have sympathy for it, I do. But it's also on you just as much as it's on us. It's actually more on you than it is on us. And we're trying to solve the problem. I've never seen anybody from that neighborhood come together and say, let's sue him. Let's come together. How many lawyers live there? How many lawyers live in that area?
I don't know.
I, I, I'm not going to ask for the number, but probably quite a few. Let's come together and let's find a solution, let's sue him ourselves.
He'll just go bankrupt.
Yeah, exactly. And that's what we're dealing with ourselves.
So our hands are tied.
And so I have sympathy, I'm not, yeah, it's not like, I think we're on the same team. I just, I just want to, the town has really been very much proactive in the past few years of trying to go after this. In reality In reality, this is an absolute crap show, and you know it, and we know it.
So just to, for people who aren't familiar with the situation, Country Club Way is owned by an LLC, so it's a little bit different than most of the roads we're talking about this evening. So most private ways within the town of Kingston are owned by the people who live on that roadway. It's a small number of people, you know, five, six, seven, two. Country Club Way is owned by High Pines, which is a totally separate entity, okay? So that's why this situation is a little bit different. The town is in litigation, we're not going to talk too much about it, but it is, saying, hey, High Pines, when you created this development, you said you were going to finish the road, and you didn't. So we're, we're trying to resolve it. For now, all we can do is say, hey, owner of Country Club Way, your roadway doesn't fill this, fulfill this policy, it won't be plowed, and he said, this is what I'm going to do to fix, fix it. And that's really the only thing we can really do from our perspective on this issue for this season.
And it's like all the trailer trucks that are coming down. It feels like 100 a day that are coming down there and making the roads even worse to create the new leaching field for the sewer system. At least 100 a day. It's, and they're tearing it up. And so Tongsberg is going to come back and say, well, they're tearing it up, I'm not fixing that.
He would, he would probably do that anyways.
He wouldn't any help.
Yeah, he has, so we, I'm with you on that, but he would do it anyways. He's already done it.
And it's like, it's bad enough that we have bad roads, but now we have all these trailer trucks coming down our neighborhood every single day. It feels like 100, I don't know how many. But what's going on here? This is crazy. With the environment we have to live in, it's just ridiculous.
The problem is, to bring those roads up to an acceptable level for the town to accept them would be, correct me if I'm wrong, like two and a half to three million dollars.
It was two million a couple of years ago.
Yeah.
That's a lot.
So we're looking at two and a half to three million.
What sort of bond does Mr. Tongsberg have on the property?
He had a $20,000 bond in the nineties.
20,000, the town?
In the nineties.
Only let him do a $20,000 bond?
This was 30 years ago.
So I'm going to stand.
Yeah, so, for us to bring it up to an acceptable level, like I said, it would be two and a half to three million dollars.
But we wouldn't.
No, no, what I'm saying is if the town were to do it, just accept it the way it was, and they wouldn't, yeah.
Yeah, I don't think those vehicles would do that.
So all you got to say is sue him, which he will go bankrupt, and the residents of Country Club Way will have to live with this forever with a bunch of Band-Aids that bust open constantly.
To my understanding.
Can the town do anything to help us?
We are trying, I mean.
We are, we're in court.
What are you doing?
We're in court.
We're in court.
You're in court?
Yes.
And how many times has he put the court hearings off?
Hold on.
How is that our fault?
No, I'm just asking. How long has it been in court?
Let me just try this, and I think, I think the Board of Selectmen are as frustrated about this as you are, sir.
Uh huh.
So I understand your frustration, but I hope you'd be a little more open-minded to hear what we have to say.
I am.
I, I look forward to seeing that.
It is.
Okay. So the town of Kingston entered into an agreement with Mr. Tongsberg a number of years ago to make certain repairs to the road. It was agreed to by the town and by Mr. Tongsberg. COVID came, Mr. Tongsberg chose for whatever reason not to make the improvements that he agreed to make. We couldn't get into court during, during the COVID situation. We returned to court, I want to say roughly a year ago, where we asked the court to, to support the town in requiring Mr. Tongsberg to get the work done that he proposed to get done, which included the paving, the second coat of paving, and things of that nature. The court agreed or supported with the town. Shortly after that, Mr. Tongsberg appealed. We're awaiting, the town is awaiting the court's scheduling of this appeal hearing. Don't know where it's going to go, feel very confident that the, the court is going to continue to support the town's position in order for Mr. Tongsberg to make, to do the work. If Mr. Tongsberg does not do the work, he will then be in contempt of court. The challenge, very candidly, is the same challenge you're facing. We're pushing Mr. Tongsberg to get this work done, but he could easily declare bankruptcy on the town of Kingston, just like he could with you. In my time here, we've encouraged the residents up there to pursue some sort of litigation against Mr. Tongsberg, to put a, some additional pressure on Mr., on him to get the work done. I can't speak to why the residents haven't pursued that, but they haven't. So I can assure you, the town of Kingston is doing whatever they can with, with very, frankly, very, very little leverage to get this work done. I feel confident that the court is going to, is going to, is going to rule in the town's favor. I don't know, frankly, if that's going to have any sort of impact on whether or not Mr. Tongsberg makes those improvements. There, there are, we've met with residents of Indian Pond, at least I have, on a couple of occasions, a groups of residents to try to, try to move forward, continue to try to be willing to do that in the future. There are no easy answers, there are no good answers. And unfortunately, the town and the residents up there find themselves in a very challenging situation with, without a clear direction on how to, how to address the situation. I understand your, like I said before, I understand your frustration, I think we're a little bit out of the scope of what we're here for this evening.
What was, when was the appeal done, please?
The appeal was, was filed by Mr. Tongsberg several months ago.
Three months ago?
Several months ago.
Six months ago?
I would say, I would say it's closer to six than three.
Six.
I don't, I don't have a, I don't have a date in front of me, I apologize. Again, we're at, we're, we're at the mercy of the court to schedule that, that, that hearing and, and hold that hearing. And as, as I mentioned, I think we're confident that we'll, we'll continue to be successful against Mr. Tongsberg. The challenge, I think, it remains, as I mentioned, the same. Does he have the wherewithal and the resources to do what he's supposed to have done? I don't know that he does at this point, any more probably than you do. But I don't have a lot of hope that that may happen. Again, happy to meet with some group or all of the residents of, of Indian Pond at a future date outside of this meeting to talk about options.
Which we've done.
Which we've done, I've done on, on a couple of occasions. I will tell you, you're absolutely right. Mr. Tongsberg will make whatever, whatever the necessary improvements are as minimalistically as he possibly can to have the roads paved this winter. He, if these potholes, I'm sorry, plowed, I apologize. If a pothole, if a pothole occurs during the, during winter season, will we reach out to Mr. Tongsberg, and he'll have to make some sort of temporary, temporary repair for that? If you have had damage to your vehicle, I would suggest you reach out to Mr. Tongsberg and file an insurance claim. I can't fix that for you, so.
I, I understand that, I definitely understand that.
Okay.
But I do welcome the board to drive around that circle.
We have, we have.
All of you.
We, we, we've been up there.
And it is horrendous.
Well, it has been for 20 years.
There are areas that are in very tough shape, there's no question about that. And we, and again, I believe this Board of Selectmen has been very proactive to try to hold Mr. Tongsberg to the agreement that he signs that would address the issues. And we're doing everything we can to have that expedite as quickly as we can. Unfortunately, we are waiting on an outside party to make, to make a court date, and that hearing, I assume, will be a very short one, and a decision will come shortly after that. But it's not because of a lack of effort from the five people sitting here with me this evening that, that Mr. Tongsberg has not made the repairs that he, or the improvements to that road that he agreed to make when that subdivision was approved by the planning board 30 years ago. So we will continue to push, but like you, unfortunately, the town of Kingston doesn't have a lot of leverage to push with, and that's part of our issue. We can only hope that with a, with a court decision, Mr. Tongsberg, if he, if he doesn't make the improvements he's supposed to within the timeframe the court requires him to make those, he'll be in contempt of court, not just not listening to the Board of Selectmen, which we hope has a little more leverage. So we're, we are, I know it's frustrating, and it's taken.
It is frustrating.
I get it.
And could you tell me why the town would let him build all those condos there without repairing the roads? Given him the building permits to be able to do that?
So.
Why?
I can't. I, as I say that tonight, I can't. There's, there's, there's a long history here that I could, that I could do some homework on and try to provide a, a, a much better answer to you, for you than I can this evening.
Great, I look forward to your homework assignment being completed.
I'll make you part of your.
Tree, you're not muted.
Who's that?
Oh, sorry, we're just getting something, something resumes coming through.
Well, anyways, you know where I'm coming from.
I do.
And you know where the residents of Country Club are coming from. It's so very frustrating for us, and we do need something to resolve this somehow.
We do.
It really, it's too much.
One of the ways to do this, it's, it's not pretty, and I think they've talked to you about it in these meetings, is to do the process that we were trying to put in place for, for this bylaw in terms of the town would, would, would put out a bond in the amount to fix the roads and bring them up to the acceptable level. That bond would then have to be a betterment, just like the, the folks who went on sewer, the people who live on that road or have a business, the, the Country Club, would all have to pay some portion of that betterment over whatever it is, 10 years. So it's a cost added to, I think it's just added to the tax bill every quarter. So that, it's a cost to, to you, which isn't pretty. But then it would be done, and it would be accepted, and then from that point on, once it's accepted as a public road, then the town would maintain it, it would, you know, pave it every so many years, repair them, and plow them.
And how long would that be? A 30-year?
We don't know how long that would be.
I don't know.
I think, I think the point is, is that I'm just going to come out and say, I think this is the first board that's actually come out and tackled this issue. And I think that's why some of my reaction to that might have been a little heated, was because we've been actually coming at this very hard.
Sure.
And.
Sorry.
And impassionately, because we want to do right by Country Club Way and the rest of the town.
Of course.
But this is, yeah, and, and so I just, it's one of those moments where you just got to go, there's a lot of questions still, but this board is probably the first board in a long time that's been going, or ever that's been really significantly going after this.
Please be proactive on this.
We are.
We have been.
Please be.
We're actively in it.
We are really, really tired of this.
I think something to just think about, too, in terms of the perspective of this, is that your frustration, living on the road and feeling like you can't do anything, imagine our frustration when we're doing every single thing in our power to try to help you guys, and we're just getting yelled at.
Let's figure it out.
It can be very frustrating for us as well.
The last thing, and, and just to maybe to, to one last comment, at least from me. One of the things that has to occur when a road is brought to town meeting for approval is we have to identify by meets and bounds. We have to identify the property that the town of Kingston is taking ownership of, which is typically the road network, the rights of way that holds, you know, the drainage and, and the water, sewer, and those types of things. That's something that a developer will, will provide to the town, to the planning board and to the Board of Selectmen that we can then bring forward to town meeting. Obviously, that hasn't happened by the owner, but the town has taken, the funding that Mr. Tongsberg has, has in place is an escrow, and we've, we've started to do the survey work and identify the meets and bounds. So again, if there was an opportunity, it's, it's a step forward to going to town meeting and having the property that we would be taking ownership of as a community identified. We can't do that. We can't bring it to town meeting without the meets and bounds, so we know exactly what we own. This board, through the recommendation of our, of our town planner, has, you know, recommended using some of his, Mr. Tongsberg's money to start that process.
The $20,000?
I'm sorry?
The $20,000?
Yeah, so we have, we have that, we have the meets and bounds just about done. And so we, again, we have that information that we need to have to legally move forward with accepting these roads. We will have that in place, so when conversations occur on the different options, and there are only really a couple that I can think of, if there was a decision to move forward with that, and we brought something to town meeting, a funding mechanism to town meeting, and it were to be approved, we could have that, we could have those roads accepted by the town and move forward. So we, so again, not going to happen next week, not going to happen next summer, probably. But I can assure you that this, these five individuals have done everything they possibly can to have the conditions of those, of that road network improved out there at the cost borne by Mr. Tongsberg.
But we do need help.
But, you know, if.
We need help.
If you want to schedule a meeting with, with the town administrator and some of the selectmen, you know, that I, we're always open to do it and to discuss this whole bond issue and the, and the payment, it's a big chunk. I mean, I.
It's a big chunk, 2 million.
Yeah, two and a half to three million, shared by everybody in there, including the Country Club, because they have a very big portion of that. Correct.
You would get a large portion out of him owning the Country Club.
So what, there's a couple, not to get too technical, and we're way off base here, so I apologize.
I'll let someone else speak, too.
So that, so there's, there's different ways to, there's different ways to assess a, a property. Oftentimes, that property is assessed by frontage. Respectfully, there's other ways of doing it, and that could be, like, for example, acreage. Acreage, obviously, is a, a methodology that could be used that would more fairly, many would argue, assess the larger landowner in that area than frontage. So there's, there, as long as it's done equitably.
Yeah, if you guys did a bond and you included the golf course and the frontage, the clubhouse, I think it would be good for the community.
There's not a lot of frontage, there's a lot of acreage.
The acreage, if you went by the acreage, not the frontage.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank, thank you very much, we appreciate that.
Good question, is it true that he doesn't have to pay that road final until all those houses are built?
No, not true. No.
Sorry. The question was whether or not the road has to wait to be paved until all the houses are built. I just want to make, because no one at home can hear you if you're not at a microphone, so just repeating it.
No. Did somebody else have a question?
He wants to.
Yep.
And as a reminder, Adams was on the roads that are getting improved.
Yeah, I was going to get this.
Okay.
That's, that's, thank you, Kenny. My name is Robert Mullen, I live on 8 Adams Avenue, just for the record, it's Adams Ave, not Drive.
Mm-hmm.
And we have met with, first of all, you guys didn't invent this problem, I know you're trying to come up with a solution, so kudos to you for putting up with this and trying to come up with a solution. Thank you. Also met with the DPW director, very accommodating, helped us out a lot. We have a plan in place, we have a couple of obstructions to remove the rocks, and we're in the process of getting that done before November 1st. It's just a little unfair that the NOOK is, if you look at the map of Kingston, it's the most populated area of the town, and obviously with summer residents, and it's slowly progressing, as the whole town is, from 20, 30 years ago, people from the South Shore, Boston are moving down here, and the town, whole dynamics of this town has changed, as well as the NOOK, which is good, good for everybody. So we've improved our homes, we are one of the only places in the town that have all sewer. The sewer came down years ago, all the residents spent, they had the Title V's, Title, whatever the, Title, whether, eight V's for the septic systems. People put new septic systems in. Within years, they had us, spent more money to put the, the sewer in. Again, unfair, it is what it is. People do work down there, and they have to go through hoops with conservation, where you see Gray's Beach getting totally sand put on there, the Ardina, which needed the help, got all fixed over. Well, we get a hard time for trying to clean out our beach or putting up eel grass. So it seems to be not a seesaw, it's, it's leaning towards one way for the NOOK and the So, it seems to be not a seesaw. It's leaning towards one way for the NOOK and the residents and other parts of the town. Should just be fair. I mean, the rocks have been there forever, and there was one comment made about the cost of the plowing, but sand trucks coming down Howland's Lanes, coming down Delano, you know, backing up and going back, oh, it takes about thirty seconds to do Adams Ave. All the other private roads down there. So, the cost of that is not exorbitant, and they're there anyway. So, it would almost cost more money for the truck to bang a U-turn and not go down that road to sand it or plow it. Again, I accommodate what you guys are doing. I appreciate it. I know you didn't invent it. You all come up with a solution, so thank you. But, and I think the town's doing a pretty good job, but it's just, just sometimes, it seems to be, as a resident, unfair. That's all. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, sir. Anybody else wanted to speak?
Adams Ave.
Adams Ave, yes.
Wilder Parkers, Twenty Stage Coach Drive. We got the worst road in the town. I just wanna say that. Two blown struts, broken oil pan in the car. It's pretty bad. And half of the road is reprocessed asphalt, the other is dirt. I have no problem, as well as my other two neighbors here, taking care of the road, as we've done as a private way for years. The real issue that really came to be, since we were able to plow it, I think, a year and a half, two years ago, was we had a water main break at the top of the road, right at the fire hydrant. It was left unsolved for several months. Now, we don't know how long the water was actually leaking underneath my road, creating, you know, erosion in general, sinkholes. But something that could be the size of a garden hose over the winter time expanded, and it could have opened up to the size of a fire hydrant leak, right? Now, it was noticed by a dog walker. He could hear the hissing, and we called about it, emailed about it. Took several months to finally get the town out there, which we thought was just a wet spring in the water department's eyes. But, yeah, it's created massive sinkholes. Access is horrible. And as a whole, my neighbors were trying to, I think it was wrote down, that we can't really settle on the issue. And I wanna thank you guys for kinda facing the music. Two weeks ago, you guys didn't have to hold this meeting, I'm pretty sure. So, thank you guys for facing the music. I believe, Kimberly, you said that three and up on private roads get plowed, I think, last week? Was that what it was?
It used to be a policy for, I don't know how many years, but it was, it was, we can't find it in writing anywhere, but at some point, someone voted who sat at this table or a table like it, to institute a policy that if there were three or more houses on a private way, it would get.
Okay, that's nice. And I hear the gentleman on the left said, "Three and under, that's a no-go," so I don't like that, obviously, with three of us on that road.
I don't think that's part of this policy now.
No.
That was just the old policy.
Okay, it's recommended.
So, now it's, if the road meets the conditions within the policy, then it can get plowed. Again, the intention is to plow as many people as we can.
Gotcha, gotcha. And obviously, I don't wanna spend town money on something that's a private road. We get that. The issue is town water main, that broke, and it got so bad that the neighbor, that's not even on our street, ended up getting a flooded basement, like, it was that much water. Just really trying to resolve it in some sort of fashion. One neighbor doesn't wanna pay at all. Thinks it's the town issue, you know? We maintain it every year. Why should we have to pay for it? I get it, you know? Anybody here that had, I think I've heard some other people here, town issues, why should they have to deal with it? I know that the road was on its way, too, a little bit, you know, but it definitely got a lot worse. What I've done thus far is I ended up having a compactor, reprocessed asphalt brought out within the last week and a half. So, we should be good to plow for now as a Band-Aid, but it's not gonna fix the issue with the sinkholes and what's the damage that's been done underneath the actual road thus far. Now, we could pave over it, yeah, like, two and a half inch layer, but that's not something that's been compacted and gravel laid down underneath. So, it really needs to be stripped and repacked to be done right. Because thus far, what I've done, I'm already seeing little dips. It's just, it's the ground underneath. It's unsettled. It needs to be done. So, thank you for your time, guys.
Thank you, Wilder.
I mean, I have more questions about when sewer and water have projects, but that's maybe a discussion for a different day.
All right, before we start talking, please.
My name's Paul Brockmire. I'm at Nine Stage Coach Drive. The last time we were here, I asked a question, and I still need an answer, and I don't know where to get it. If I have it paved to my driveway, is that satisfactory for, at least to get plowed down to my space?
No, it's not. That's your answer, sir.
What's that?
No, it's not. The road has to be repaired, not just to your driveway. I'm sorry.
Well, then, then, then we have a real problem on the street, because we do have one person who's not willing to pay a dime. It's true. Well, he was screaming it at the last meeting, and he was screaming it out in the parking lot.
So, that's a question for the highway department. So, if repairs are made to this, and we believe, as residents on private roads, you believe that you adhere to the policy as is presented or potentially moved later this evening, the highway, you can ask the highway department to come back down and reassess, take another look, and say, can we get this plowed now? Like, is this sufficient?
Absolutely.
And then, you would be able to get it. What the suggested motion before us this evening says is the list of streets would not be maintained this winter if the necessary repairs are not completed by November first. The necessary repairs, we're relying on the highway department to tell us it's good enough for us to plow it. We can do it safely.
So, do we call Mr. Bassler to get him out there and get the approval?
Yes, and he retires on November first, so the timing is perfect.
I will tell you.
So, get it done before November first, because then you're just out of luck.
I will tell you, after the last meeting, I had a very long discussion with him. He's very amicable to.
Yes.
Yes, and there will be an interim.
Again, I think.
And I would be very amicable if I was leaving my job on November first also.
I think the highway department, I think this board, again, I just wanna reiterate, we want to plow as many, to as many of these houses as we possibly can. So, that's what we're trying to get to.
Well, my long-term concern is that, because we do have a bandage, that's what we have. The portion of the road that's dirt was never paved. So, I mean, do we have to pave that now?
No, it doesn't have to be paved to be maintained. It's the, if there are big potholes or if the road isn't wide enough, there's.
As of this moment, that's been addressed, but that doesn't fix the road problem. And, you know, we were also told the last time we heard that we would try to get the water department here, because we are genuinely concerned about the fact that that water, I didn't know that water main, I thought, they thought it was spring water. They kept telling us it was, you know, just groundwater, and it turned out not to be groundwater, but by then, we had sinkholes, water holes, the neighbor had water in his basement. That is not on us. Now, the road, as my neighbor previously stated, was already in need of some work. But not, it hadn't buckled, which is what's happened since the water main break.
Keith, go ahead. Thank you. Couple of things. You've got a water commissioner sitting in the audience who has indicated that they wanna work with everybody as much as they can. I would urge you to have a conversation with him tonight and get on a water commission agenda to address the issue you have with the potential damage in the road that you believe the water department caused with that water leak. As the chairman mentioned a little while ago, right now, we've got three separate businesses. We've got the general fund operating budget, we've got a water department, we've got a sewer department. I would urge you to speak to members of the water department and ask to go on a water department agenda and voice your concerns, and ask them if they'd be willing to make some repairs to the roadway that you believe are caused by the leak that the water line caused. So.
Part of my thought on it is, you know, forty-five years my wife's been on the road. It's not where, it's not just the water. I understand that we've got forty-five years riding that road.
Sure.
So, we have to contribute. I get that.
Understood.
You know, it shouldn't be one hundred percent on us, based on the level of damage that was done. We could've just paved over what was there before, but now the potholes and so forth that were created by this leak make it such that they're gonna have to come in and grind up the old road, spread that out, and then redo it. And that pricing is twenty-something thousand dollars.
And so, I understand and don't doubt that that's at least the cost of that. But if you do believe that there's some responsibility on the town for the damage that may have been caused to a portion of the road because of a water leak, I would just respectfully suggest you have a conversation with the water commission.
Okay.
Voice your concerns, and they may be willing to work with you to address that portion of the situation that you have on your particular road. It's gonna be up to them.
And that sounds like a separate issue from the fact that you guys have put Band-Aids on it to allow plowing.
It sounds like you might be fine if.
Yeah.
So, it is, but, you know, next year is next year.
Right. No, 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 but I'm just, but it gives you time to.
We could, yeah, right. We couldn't get the water department to agree to provide us water, I mean, if we had to do it by November first. I, you know, it's probably gonna take some time to resolve that issue. Right now, we can get the.
So, you've got a year, right? So, ideally, what I would respectfully suggest to you is give Streets, Trees and Parks a call tomorrow morning. Let them know you've made the improvements that he's asked you to make. They'll take a ride out. They'll meet with you if you'd like to meet with them. Just let them know when you're available. He'd be happy to come out. And if it's done to his satisfaction, you're good to go for, until next year, when the things start washing out again.
Richard Loring, just one quick comment. That will be brought up to the water superintendent first thing tomorrow morning. I will have him get in touch with the residents of Stage Coach, and we will work to resolve the issues as best we can.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else that wanted to speak on the four roads that we have? It looks like we have somebody coming up.
Hi, Françoise Muller-Hardt, from Stage Coach Drive, number twenty-five. So, I wanted to make sure that the record was straight. The point that we were making is that, like Bud was mentioning, was that we do believe that the road was significantly damaged, and we want, and, you know, I have the lot to play pickleball with Bud, so I got him to interfere, because there were months where everybody, even people that were not involved, were calling. So, I think that's why, you know, our point is that we should not bear the full cost of fixing this. That's basically it.
Okay, thank you, thank you very much. Anyone else that wanted to speak?
Just briefly, Des.
My name's Tom Barrett. I live at Two Seventy-Six Country Club Way. I just have a question with respect to the High Pines, which I know is the LLC that owns the street there. Do any of you know whether or not that LLC includes the sidewalks, because they are in equally disastrous condition as the roads are? Does anybody know?
I believe it does.
The High Pines owns all the assets out there.
I'm sorry, sir?
High Pines owns all the road network out there, assets out there, including the sidewalks.
Okay. All right. Do any of you know by chance what the docket number is for the Plymouth Superior Court case?
I don't. I could, I could look at, look that up tomorrow, and if you wanted to either give me a call or send me an email, I'd be happy to respond.
No, I'll come by and I'll speak with you and get the docket number.
Fair enough.
Great. Thank you very much.
Hi, I'm Cecilia Mullen at Eight Adams Ave. I have a question in regards to, you know, we've, we're gonna fix our rock issue. Going forward, in years to come, you know, it may be decided that there's another issue, or that, how do we become a public way in that any further issues that were to arise in the future with our road or any other roads? How do we go about making that happen when we've, after we've made these, you know, improvements?
So, it's a bit of a lengthy process, and again, I'm probably, I'm absolutely not the person to answer all your questions, but if you wanna stop by or give me a call, I can put you in contact with either our Streets, Trees and Parks superintendent or our planning director, who are much more adept at working the process with you and having you understand what has to happen. It's a, it is a lengthy, cumbersome process, but we're happy to go through that with you and explain to you what would have to occur to have your road be brought to town meeting for consideration, for acceptance.
And on top of that, I would pay very close attention to springtime meeting coming up. We're probably gonna, well, I'm just gonna say, we're gonna bring another article to town meeting, like last year, to have a very clear-cut roadway. That's right. Pathway, that's a wrong way to say it, to get, to get. So, somebody can say, listen, we have this private road. Here's the steps we have to take. We'll adopt that as a town. The town has to vote in, all of us. And to make that very, very clear for everybody. So, last year, it was brought up. It was denied. Hopefully, this spring town meeting coming up, it will be tweaked a little bit, but that will give even more of a clear opportunity in a pathway to be able to get all those roads, or to be able to get a road accepted. So, that way, it's done and over.
The purpose of the bylaw was to make a clear path for people who wanted to make a private road become a public way.
I think we're all concerned that we're taking care of it this year, but, you know, subsequent years, this may come up again for a different reason, or they may decide not to do any private roads. I know some towns are saying that.
Yep.
So, I think we need to have a clear. And do we know when that town meeting is?
It'll be, it'll be like the first, within the first two weeks of May, and then.
Just because I, you know, a lot of us.
It's the third Saturday in May.
Third Saturday in May.
Oh, okay, because a lot of us work weekends.
But some of the discussions will come up January, February, March, as the warrant comes out, and when we start discussing it and kinda going over the details of it, you'll see the town planner come up here, maybe the community director, and that's when discussions will come up. And that's where the feedback really comes into play. So, when we get to town meeting, we can rally the people around it to go, this is, this is an article that the community's supporting, right? You're supporting, we're supporting, we're all supporting. And it kinda takes a bit of a chunk of time to get to that place, and it really starts in January, February, March, and then it gets voted on in May. But that article, I think, is very, very timely and important to get, to get fine-tuned and correct and right.
But when it comes to this, this is a policy. So, this is a policy decision. So, accepting roadways and that bylaw would be something that has to go to town meeting and be accepted. This, the plowing policy, is a policy that's set by the Board of Selectmen. So, the board changes people, new people get elected. They could relook at this policy if, I think, I hope, this board will be filled with people who want to serve as many people in this community as humanly possible. So, I hope that the goal will always be to provide as many services to everyone in the community as possible. I hope it maintains that way. If the equipment changes, if the roadway shifts, if all of a sudden we have more pickup trucks with plows on them, and we can serve more narrow roads, the policy could change to be able to access more people. So, I can't say the policy won't change, but my hope is that the intent behind the policy of trying to get to as many residents as possible would be maintained.
Okay, thank you.
People are really gonna wanna pay attention this winter, as we're developing the budget for the town and all the departments. So, the schools, the, you know, water, sewer, there's lots of stuff going on this year. And as you all know, we haven't been building. We haven't been building new homes. So, one of, everybody hates building new homes. Everyone's like, we gotta keep it small, but the problem is, everybody needs growth. The country needs growth, the state needs growth, our town needs growth. Or our fees go up, because costs for running things, just keeping everything status quo, the costs go up every year, because our costs are going up. And that just means our taxes are going up, our fees are going up, sewer, water, everything, everything's going up. When you have development, you kinda share that out a little bit. You know, the hard thing is, you know, when we do develop, we wanna develop in a way that doesn't impact the town services, doesn't overflow the schools, doesn't overflow the roads, because obviously, we have traffic issues, too, especially when we're tearing up the roads all summer long. I'm just as frustrated as everybody else, but it's a necessary evil. The problem is, we're gonna have huge increases in our costs. We don't have new development. So, we might need an override next year to fund the town, which means. um, which means next year we could be looking at cutting services. So getting back to your point, you know, um, future select boards could vote to make cuts. Um, so that could happen. So just stay involved, just pay attention. Look at the, um, our local Facebook pages, um, on the town website, what's going on with our budget. Watch some school committee meetings, there's regional, and then our local school committees. Every, costs are going up everywhere. So there's gonna be cuts made in probably the schools and the town. Um, so there's just gonna be a lot going on. So definitely pay attention over, over the winter and leading into town meeting.
One lesson I feel like I've learned from this particular, one of the many lessons I've learned from this particular issue is we, when we are sending about notices, we probably need to do a wider net for a butters because we've had quite a few people whose driveways were on the private road that didn't just pull up when you list the properties. So we, we probably just need to do internally a better job of just widening that net a little bit to make sure we don't miss those. And I'm, I'm glad that the board was willing to do a public hearing and have this open discussion because it isn't required. But I think it's, it's an important thing to be able to do, so.
So having said that, did anybody else wanna speak during the hearing portion? Yeah, go ahead.
Rich Ashley, Cobb Ave. So I know, hopefully you're gonna vote for Cobb Ave in my old neighborhood, post-court. But really, I don't have anything to say. I just thought it was necessary to thank you, uh, for listening to us the last meeting and having this meeting today. I really appreciate all you've done to try to work with us. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's how, that's how it's supposed to go.
If I, if I can make one plug to the, to the Kingston website, which is, is a work in progress. But you can sign up for about fifty different types of alerts for whatever you care about, water, sewer, town meetings, everything. And you can pick and choose. It's a great way to get information. They can text you, email you. Uh, so that's just something to, something to make note about. Usually we have one person in the crowd. So I feel like, there's a bunch of people here, I can actually say it.
Yeah, right.
And if you have trouble finding anything on the website, call Don.
Right.
All right. Anybody else wanna speak? Yeah, go ahead, sir.
Sean Hatcher, Three Russell Pond Road. I just echo what my neighbor said. Um, there is about eight houses on the neighborhood. That, none of us had any idea that this was a private road. So I know we talked about that. I guess I just need to, if we're gonna do a little more research, understand, I understand you have to vote on it when the neighborhood's built and it has to be accepted by the town, but that none of us have that in our deed, that it was ever private. I, I know that might be something that's above all of our pay grades, but how we go from there? Cause if we did, we would've opened an HOA, we would've all been saving money for things like this. We gladly would've taken care of the road if we'd known it was our road. We didn't know it was our road, which is why we all assumed when we saw the town out there making, there's eight or nine repairs, to Brian's point, that I've taken photos. We've talked to Paul about, he's taken ownership of one of them. He's not sure where the other ones go. There's a broken ma, uh, storm drain where our kids caught their foot a couple times. He goes, well, it's not our road, we can't do anything. I understand all that, but again, if we knew it was our road, we would've been taking care of funds to take care of that. Now with only two months, and now we're still pushing this down the road, where you're saying you still wanna look into it, which I greatly appreciate. I still think there, there was a gray area where maybe we should have some sort of agreement where we patched the potholes that we need for this summer, this winter, and we, whether the neighbors, you know, repair half that cost and the town helps or something. But we're just kicking this thing down the road a little too far to the point where, are we paying for something or are we not paying for something? And it's not just the potholes that are issued. There's infrastructure and other issues on the roads that need repair, which obviously if it's private roads, it's gonna fall back on us. But that's a great sum of money. We're not talking three or four thousand dollars doing commercial construction and doing state access roads to the buildings that we do. I know the number, I know what it is. Um, so I just wanted to say that first, and I appreciate you looking into it more. I guess clarity on where do we move from here is what was my question, really?
I, I think, I mean, we, we can make a motion, take the vote, leave the policy in place for these roads. And then what I had said earlier when we discussed Russell Pond was I was asking Keith if we could get a list of water projects and sewer projects on that road, get more information before our next meeting. Cause we can always make, we could always take a vote at our next meeting.
Well, and that's under the discretion of the, um, Highway Department, right?
Correct.
To look at and make sure that the plow can safely navigate the street.
Right. So, so basically, I don't think, I don't feel like I have enough information to say, hey, we're gonna go ahead and plow you guys this, this, this year. I don't think I'm, be personally ready to do it.
Well, and just as far as knowing it was private and not, I mean, unfortunately, there's probably like half the people in this room knows more than I, about this than I do. But after two weeks of real estate school, the buyer beware, you know, like, your bro, I mean, this, the selling broker's not gonna tell you that. And honestly, your broker's probably not gonna know.
No, all of our listings say public access.
Yeah, so it's just, unfortunately, that seems like a fairly common thing, right? I mean-
But there's nothing recorded in the town too. Cause we did like a back and forth with Valerie, and she's like, nuts go off, yeah. I went down that road, I'm like, how can we not know this? No one knows.
It's like the, it's like the dark side of the due diligence side, but which you, which you would never think that you would have to do. You would never think you'd have to do that. You think that you would, like, if you were buying a condo, they would tell you the HOA fee. If you're not, they're in breach of, you know, their, their, their rules and regulations under the law of brokers. But like, under this, this area, it's, it's a gray area. And unfortunately, buyers usually do get screwed on this one. And I'm just, you know, being honest on that side of it, but, um-
Are the real estate agents not required to disclose if it's a public or private?
Very gray.
If it's easily-
It's very gray.
Only reason I know I asked one last week. And she said, well, it's sort of one of those things where if it's easy to Google and find out, then yeah, you, it was on you to do it.
That's correct. My real estate agent said the same thing. She said generally if it's noted in the town or if it's something, information we can find, we can say it. Otherwise, some people make it up, which they shouldn't, but if there's no legal action to be taken to it.
Right.
Even if they were wrong.
Right.
So it is the same information, but like, that's why I went a little further with it and tried to look up in the town and the records of when it was being built. And I, we just couldn't find anything that ever said it was public or private. So it was like a very gray area.
Would have to be accepted, there would have to be a vote accepting the road into a town meeting. If they don't ha, if, if that never happened-
If that doesn't exist, then it's a private way.
Yeah, then it's private. But that would then be on, who's gonna go through and look at the, the, the notes from every town meeting from the last-
Don will do it.
So, well, that's what I did. I actually Googled the meeting minutes from a long time ago. Cause I think when we bought the house four years ago, we're the newest neighbors, our whole closing kind of re-up covenants that weren't signed off and never recorded, and you needed a new covenant. So we were looking through all the meeting minutes and the records, and I spent hours and days reading all these things just to find out where we were here rather than just pointing the finger. Um, so I guess what I hear from you saying is you're not going to accept the road unless you make the repairs, is that-
Well, I don't, I don't know. I mean, what I was saying is I don't wanna make a decision on your road tonight.
Sorry, we can't accept the road.
No, no, understood. I'm just trying to, where we go from here? Is it a closed subject or, or is it still open with the town or? I guess what I'm asking with the town-
Are you talking about accepting the roads or, or plowing?
No, 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 no.
Just plowing?
Helping us to plow. Would the town be open to helping us make the repairs to plow?
We cannot, the town can't spend taxpayer money on private property.
Maintenance of the roads.
On maintenance. The plowing is different because that's a, there's a state law that allows us to do that, but we can't go in and make repairs. It would be like me having the Highway Department come out and pave my, redo my-
No, if I gotta-
I mean, if it was just dumping some dirt for them to spread, that we could do.
They can do, which is different, but I don't think that's what they need.
I can do that myself, but we got quotes, like we told Paul, we got quotes from payers into the pothole repair, you know, anywhere from five to fifteen thousand dollars. And I'm asking, if we got a private contractor, is there any wiggle room? Because we didn't know, due to the fact that my neighbor Brian said, some of these damages are done by town repairs that have deteriorated. Is there a gray area where we would meet us in the middle on some cost?
So that's where we, I don't believe that we can as the Board of Selectmen. I, that, this is why I was asking Keith to get some information on when water repairs and sewer repairs were done. Because then potentially it could be done through those departments. But then if that's happening, we'd have to talk to the, the highway. This is weird, the way the town has done. Again, like I said, the Highway Department-
Three separate elected-
Is under us.
Boards.
And then the Water Department is a different board, and the, and the Sewer Department is another board.
So I understand.
So we, we oversee Highway Department. So Paul, um, we'll need to talk to him, and he does the plowing. But if Water Department or Sewer Department caused the problems, I, I don't know how that works.
So I guess, what's the action item? Is it in your court or our court to go for?
It's our court to look at this, to, we need to do some researching, in my opinion. What I would like to do is, um, talk to Paul, talk to Keith, find out about water and sewer, what, what had happened, um, and see what we can do for this year.
Also, I would also make note of if there's short-term repairs that can be done.
Right.
Start working toward those. You can talk to Paul about what they would be. Whether it's filling in potholes, you know, things like that.
Yeah, yeah.
To get it to the point where it's plowable.
Yeah, I mean, I was just talking about things. We, we can do the little things, but even like, uh, there's a storm catch basin that has a piece of it missing that literally my daughter's foot went through. So I was like, can the town give us one? They said, no, it's a private road. I'm like, okay, so I feel like there's some gray areas there outside of the plowing conditions? Cause that clearly doesn't get broken by anything other than a plow slamming into it. So, and I get it's a private road, so I, I feel like there's a, a bigger discussion here, which is why we didn't do the repairs yet, and we weren't willing to just completely subside to that we think it was completely all on us. But we're also willing to ta, help, but like I said, we didn't know it was a private road at all, so we were kinda trying to solve that problem.
Again, just for me, I need more information from our side-
Okay.
So, as things stand though, this policy is an active policy. It was voted in August of twenty twenty-three to go into effect in April of twenty twenty-four. What we're considering tonight is making some adjustments to that policy just for this year. So currently, if we didn't move this motion with this particular road in here, the policy stands.
It does.
Doesn't change anything. Whereas if we keep your road in this motion, it gives you a little bit more flexibility. And I actually wanna adjust a little bit of the wording maybe. Um, so it says, "To the satisfaction of the Streets, Trees and Parks Department." Instead of "By November first," I don't, they, maybe it could be next week. Maybe it could, I don't, I don't know. Maybe it could be November third, I don't know.
Well, also it could be resolved halfway through the winter, or things like that too. There's no-
I agree. I agree.
But I think if we don't make a motion on it, it puts you in a worse position than you're in now. Cause at least this says, okay, we're not, we're not plowing unless things are improved to the satisfaction of the Highway Department. But that could be, you guys could work together to figure out what that looks like. Cause we, we're not gonna, we don't know, we, we're not-
Right.
We're not road experts. We may be road commissioners, but we're not road experts.
Totally understand.
So we're trying to find a middle ground.
Yeah, I just, there's a lot of, I guess, I get what you're saying, but I, I'm still confused when I walk away tonight. If I make those repairs tomorrow, that's fine, but all the other, when I'm talking about the cost and getting a little, how do, do I address that in another meeting or another time?
I think you should, I think you should call Mr. Bazler, right? And have a discussion with him. And then, I mean, if you wanna contact us after that conversation, I think we would be open to hearing, you know, what the plan is. I don't know if you need to wait two weeks.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think also you were alluding to water, sewer, something like that.
Yeah, that's-
If that is, if that is an issue, you need to go directly to them. Cause that is outside of our purview.
Okay. Yeah, there's a, there's a storm catch basin that's missing a good six inches of the corner. And anyone that walks a dog down there, a road down, uh, uh, walks down the road? So I have pictures of it, and I tried, I talked to him. I said, also, when we were talking about the private road versus public, I was like, I, I don't know how this isn't something that's taken by the public because that's a water source. So that's not really some, that's infrastructure. Like you said, I mean, that's an easement. So I would thought that would've fallen on you, you guys. But he didn't really have an answer either, cause he was just roads. So I get there's separate-
So would a storm catch basin be water, sewer, I mean-
No, I mean, the cat, I, I think, uh, the, the storm catch basin was installed as part of the road network to take the water off the road-
Sure.
-obviously, and have that be released someplace else.
Right.
So that's a road issue. Uh, the chap, again, so your road is unaccepted, meaning, uh, either the developer didn't finish the road and bring it to town meeting for acceptance, or, uh, it was never intended to be a public road. Not sure which one it is at this point. Um, but I would suggest to you that, just like the road repairs need to occur to have us maintain the roads, if you wanna have that storm drain cover replaced, I don't think that's a town responsibility. Or a wa, or a water responsibility. That, the water, the work the Water Department does, obviously any issues are underneath the road. So they wouldn't put any sort of drainage structure in, uh, to, to have the water leave the roadway in, in some, in some manner, in this case, a storm drain. So I, I think that the cover itself is, you know, we're happy to provide you a vendor that we buy our, 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 you know, supplies from. But I think, I don't think that's a town of Kingston or a Kingston Water Department expense, respectfully.
Could I ask another question? It's kind of, I, I'll try to wrap this up, cause I know we was trying to get, get going. But I, it gets to that point, if nobody, we didn't know we owned the road. I know we mentioned like Country Club Way earlier, there's, if you had an issue with your car, you sue his insurance. Well, there's no insurance on a road, there's no HOA. So if anyone gets caught with their foot in that or damages the car on the road, what happens there?
It would be the residents.
So we would get sued?
You don't own the road.
You, you want, you want to the centerline of the road.
So we would wanna get an HOA to protect ourselves and an insurance?
I would urge you to speak to an attorney.
Okay, thank you.
All right. If there's no other comments online or in person, doesn't look like it, um, I'm gonna go ahead and close the, uh, public hearing and now, um, open it up to the board for discussion, possible motions. Any questions, comments, or any motions?
I guess my question would be, do we need, do we not need to include Franklin Street or Snavely Road because they weren't-
I would not, we need to find out.
Before?
Yeah.
Okay.
I wouldn't include it.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, my only recommendation on the motion is removing the date.
From the last one?
Mainly because you can make the repairs on November first, you can make them on January thirty first, it doesn't matter when.
Well, no, I disagree. And the reason we put November first is the Streets, Trees and Parks Department is working to identify the plow routes, know where things are going. So they would like to have-
It done.[1576.91]
A date certain so they can finalize their winter work.
So if a resident can't make said date and they get their stuff done in December, how would do they just go back to the highway department and say, come reassess our road and then it's going to have to come before us because we set a date?
No.
They're not obligated to. The the policy says you got to do it by November first so that all the plowing routes can be determined and, yeah.
I would leave the date in it as is.
Okay.
Um, anyone want to make a motion?
I move the board of selectmen. That's where it stops. Um, modify the policy, um, for the 2024, 2025 winter season as follows. Post court and Cobb Ave will be plowed during the 2024, 2025 winter season, but must move fences in the right of way by October 1st, 2025 or forfeit winter maintenance in the future. Number two.
Oh.
What?
Sorry, go ahead.
Meadowbrook Road, Podbury Lane and Bradford Lane be delivered material to be spread by the property owners, delivered by, oh, yeah, once the material is spread, an owner will contact Streets, Trees and Parks, who will inspect the roadway to determine at, um, the town's discretion, the road is in the condition to be maintained this winter. Material will not be provided for these roads in the future. So that material to be provided by Streets, Trees and Parks. Okay. And then number three, Country Clubway, Cedar Street, Russell Pond Road and Stagecoach Drive will not be maintained this winter if the necessary repairs are not completed by November first.
Question. Are we, do we really need to modify the policy or should we just make the motion as is so that way it's a one-time standing?
That's fine, but I move the board of selectmen and then post court. Didn't make a lot of sense. So I was trying to figure out how to tie.
Yeah, I'm just, I just, I just, I'm just not.
Provide, provide the following, provide the following, um, exceptions to the existing.
Amend for this season.
No, I don't think you want, you're not amending the policy. You're you're providing exceptions to the policy.
For the 2024, 2025 season only.
Yep.
Provide the following exceptions. Okay.
Do you have a second? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous. Thank you.
And thank you, everybody. Thank you.
Thank you.
We need the feedback in order to do this well, so we appreciate it. All right, what's next?
Uh, I want to jump ahead to John Gilfoil.
Okay.
Um, hold on, he's got a.
Do you need a three-minute recess?
All right, we're going to take a three-minute recess. Back to order. We don't have all all Colony Planning Council here. And oh, here's Mr. Gilfoil. Does anybody know that I'm, I started?
I know.
Hey, Keith.
We started. All right.
Okay, so, um, we're going to start off. I'm going to jump out of order and I'm going to have, uh, Mr. Uh, John Gilfoil, Public Relations. Um, they're going to provide, uh, or present public relations services for the town of Kingston.
Welcome and thank you for your patience.
Yeah.
In waiting, you might have learned about some of our PR issues today. I actually came away with several ideas that I didn't talk about. You know, not, uh, some, you know, good ideas and things like that, you know, so. Um, so, yeah, my name's Ben Pollen. Do you want me to start or should I?
Yeah, hold on one second. Hey, guys, can we keep the chatter down a little bit? Thanks.
That's okay. It works. Great. Hi, uh, the green light is on. That means that I I'm being heard. Okay. Uh, hi, uh, my name's Ben Pollen. I'm the Senior Vice President of John Gilfoil Public Relations. Uh, I've been talking to Keith and going back and forth about, um, the town potentially utilizing our services. Um, I want to give a bit of a background about our company. Um, so we are a full-service, uh, public relations, uh, communications firm. Uh, we provide, um, communication services for largely the public sector. So uh, municipalities, police departments, fire departments, school districts. Uh, the company was started in 2013. Um, we have approximately 300 clients, um, in 14 states. Uh, we're based here in Massachusetts. We have two offices, one Canton and one in North Andover. Uh, most of our clients are, um, in the eastern part of Massachusetts. Uh, so for our PR services, um, we do have, uh, we offer our services to whole municipalities that would cover all departments within a town. Uh, in some communities, we just have, uh, you know, some departments. So it could be just the police and fire department. It could be just a school district. Um, but, you know, as I mentioned, in some communities, we have the whole town with all the different departments. And so that is, um, you know, what I proposed to Keith. There there is an option for, uh, all departments, uh, except for the school district, uh, and then another option, uh, that includes the school district as well. Um, and I'm not sure if you guys have our proposal, uh, handy, but I can, you know, answer any questions about that. Um, for our PR services, um, we do content creation, writing of press releases, writing of website posts, social media posts. We do uh, graphics work, uh, infographics. Uh, we can do things like letters to the community, uh, FAQs, uh, information sheets, things like that. Um, we can also do, um, you know, uh, video work, um, and also uh, other types of communication like writing speeches and, uh, you know, talking points, things like that. Um, when we're talking about, uh, the municipal side of things, uh, the types of content and categories that our our content typically falls under would be your positive and and day-to-day news. So, uh, you know, initiatives like, uh, this road issue that you've been dealing with. Um, you know, initiatives like, uh, important town, uh, meeting article warrants that might come up and, you know, providing people with information and educating them about what, uh, you know, these topics are, uh, why they're important to the community, uh, what a yes vote mean, what a, what a no vote means, um, and and trying to, uh, again, help the town to be, you know, good communicators and train the town to be good communicators overall. Uh, we largely work with small and medium-sized communities. Um, a lot of the communities that we work with, uh, don't have either the, uh, budget to be able to support a full-time public information officer or a commis person. Um, or they don't have the amount of news that would warrant hiring a full-time, uh, communications person. So we come into, uh, you know, at a fraction of the cost of hiring a full-time person with benefits, uh, to be able to provide 24/7 services, um, and availability to help with content creation. Uh, we also do media relations so we can help with, uh, you know, kind of be a liaison between town officials and the media. Um, that's not to say that we want to be a roadblock. Uh, we always preach to all of our clients to be as transparent and open and fast as possible when it comes to dealing with communicating with the public and communicating with the media. Uh, but we can also help with crisis management and that's where the, uh, the 24/7 piece comes in. Uh, you know, we we work with all of our clients every single day, day and night. Uh, we have a staff member who, uh, covers overnights for us during the week. Uh, so he's on from 7:00 PM until 8:00 AM every morning. And then, uh, the rest of the PR division within the company does a rotation on weekends and holidays. So uh, if you're going to call us for something, if something comes up that there's an emergency, if there's a water main break that happens on a Saturday or on Christmas morning, uh, you'll have a phone number to be able to reach a person who's actually working at that time and we'll be able to jump on, uh, whatever issue is that that might come up. So for the police department, uh, you know, that that chase that they had in that crash, uh, you know, we could have easily been able to jump on that situation in real time and, you know, write a press release, uh, do the communications back and forth with the media, make sure that they're getting the information that they're looking for, help provide any updates. Um, I know that you have somebody who does, uh, your Facebook and everything like that, but they could have been tied up on the scene and, you know, actually working the scene and and investigating and things like that. We can be the people that are, you know, on standby, uh, you know, writing and working and doing the things in the background while the police department are dealing with the task at hand. Uh, and so, you know, we can help the fire department with with issues like that or any other type of, you know, breaking news or incident-based, uh, situations that might happen as well.
Yeah, go ahead, Keith.
So, thank you. So I I had the opportunity to be introduced, uh, to to Gilfoil and some of the individuals in the organization probably a couple of months ago now. Um, they, as he mentioned, they they work with a number of communities. Um, and, you know, I've done some homework, spoke to the, spoke to the department heads a couple of times during department head meetings. Uh, this is a, um, this would provide a significant improvement in the ability for the town to get information out to the public. I think every department has the, has, uh, the great intention of of trying to post things to the website, post things to our Facebook pages, things of that nature. And because life gets in the way or something comes up, we just aren't as proactive with the posting of information, uh, as we could be. Um, you know, he, there was, there was a discussion or a mention of what happened to the fire department. The, I think, um, uh, something that I, maybe Chief Holmes wants to touch base on. You know, we, because we're not contracted with Gilfoil at this point, the police chief has had conversations, I believe, with the superintendent of schools and some of the, some of the senior staff at the su- at the schools about hiring Gilfoil to provide a informational show, if that's the right term, about what happened or what could happen, uh, to kids, high school age kids or below, when they act or say things in a that that they don't, and they don't certainly understand the impact of their actions, their comments, uh, their postings and try to be proactive in getting that message out to the kids of of the Silver Lake School, the School Department and Kingston School Department. Um, so they understand that when you post something on social media or you say something in a classroom that somebody overhears or or something along those lines, where that could go next in the impact it could have, not just immediately on that child's um, scholastic life, but, you know, that could follow him or them, I should say, uh, for for years, years to come. So, you know, that's obviously, um, kind of a special project, but I'm really intrigued in in working with an organization that could provide us a consistent, um, professional, um, proactive message um, that that we, that town employees don't do as well as we could do, frankly, and is this something we absolutely have to have as a community? No. Um, does this, is this going to enhance the the the, our ability to proactively and effectively communicate with the people who want to know what's going on with the town of Kingston absolutely well? Um, it'd be a one-year commitment, um, at a price of $1,499 a month. Uh, and as, as he mentioned, um, you know, it's 24-hour service. If God forbid, something were to happen at 2:00 tonight or tomorrow morning, um, we reach out to them. They can help us craft a a press release. Um, I'd hate to take away some of the responsibilities that that, uh, Mr. Lieutenant Scavera loves to do, uh, and is so, is so skilled in, um, but.
For those at home, he gave a thumbs up.
Yes, but, uh, you know, again, uh, there are times where I think he probably be, would rather be at a scene assisting his, um, fellow department members than sitting behind a computer typing something. Um, so I wanted to bring this to the board because I think it's a, it's more of a policy, policy decision, uh, than it is me just, I mean, I I think I could have said I've I found $1,500 a month and this is what I want to do with it. Um, but I I wanted to bring it to the board because I think it's something the board needs to consider, think about and and make a decision on whether they want to move forward and proactively provide this sort of media presence, um, to try to enhance. I mean, and again, the timing is not great, honestly. But one of the things I'd love them to jump on, and we've talked about, is, um, the MBTA zoning issue. They have, they have supported a number of communities that they work for in, um, presenting information to the public that's, that's, um, informative and helps the public form a decision on whether or not they support the MBTA zoning based on factual information. I think we can still take advantage of that to some degree. If they were here two months ago, we probably had, would have been able to take a a greater advantage of that. Um, but there are going to be other topics, um, as we work our way into the future that that having somebody who has that, that having somebody who has proactively and successfully assisted a community in presenting information, good or bad, in a factual manner. So people are aware of what's happening in their community and, and can help them make a decision in some instances. You know, it's a win for everybody, so...
Why don't, why don't we, we've still got a lot of stuff to cover tonight.
Yeah, sorry.
So why don't we jump to questions, if anybody has questions about this?
Well, I, I guess my question or concern or comment is what does, what does 16 hours get you in the media world? Because to me, if you're discussing to, or if a department head sends, please write up this report, they're then going to spend, you know, well, I guess it depends on how you bill, but then they're, they're going to spend an hour of time contacting the department head to ask them, what do you want us to write? And they're going to spend an hour drafting it, then they, so is 16 hours going to give us three things a month? Or is it, that's my...
Sure, and I, I think that's a fair question. And, and honestly, I, I, I can't answer that specifically. What I would be expecting from, from senior staff is presenting an information and a draft of a, of a, of a topic to Gilfoyle, asking them to review it, modify where they feel, and make recommended changes where they feel appropriate. Because at the end of the day, they're a tool for town staff. It's still going to be me, the police chief, the planning director, the fire chief, who is putting their name behind the information that is distributed. So I don't want him writing me, writing a statement for me with me, without me having any input or, or, or writing it in my, in the, in a, in a manner that I'm comfortable, you know, putting something on paper for. So I think they're more of a, we're going to push an idea to them, they're going to say, okay, here's how I would suggest you do it. And then we get that, we get their input feedback.
So Keith, can I just jump in?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Please. So, you know, I think it largely depends on, you know, what a given month looks like and, and what you're asking us to work on. Typically, if it's, you know, a, writing a press release or a website post or something like that about an open house at the fire department, that's a 15-minute conversation with the chief or whoever has the information and probably a half an hour to an hour to, to write it and put it together. You know, we're, we're not starting a timer for like when we're writing an email and then ending the timer when we send it off. I think it's more so to be able to track some of the, you know, more significant, you know, time sucks of, you know, if we were asked to sit in on a meeting that, you know, takes a couple of hours, that for a more complex issue for us to kind of wrap our heads around and strategize about. I think that's another thing, you know, about, you know, our PR services. It's not just, you know, we're not just order takers. We're not just, you know, getting the information from you, writing it up, and then giving you a draft to, to take a look at. We're helping you with the strategy side of things, helping you to figure out how best to communicate an issue to the public, to the media. You know, helping you to determine, you know, is this a story that could, you know, be, you know, get interest from the Boston media, the TV media, to have them come down? And we could help with the logistics around all that stuff? Or is it something that should just go to the local paper? Or should it even be a press release? Should it be a social media post that takes, you know, five minutes to write? So it really depends. You're, you're going to have busy months, you're going to have slower months. And we do have the availability to, you know, add on additional time if you do have, you know, a busier month. But it's, it's really hard to say, you know, how many pieces of content that's going to equal on a given month, just because of, you know, the nature of news and, you know, the way information flows and things like that.
Any other questions?
I just, I just had a quick question. So obviously, the chiefs have already had this conversation with you. Because I know that they already have someone that does the PR for their department. So how does that work?
What do you mean?
Like if you, if they already have a Facebook page that they use.
Yep.
How do you tap into that Facebook page? How, how would it work from like seen to being posted?
There's a couple of things. One, we don't want to come in and, you know, interrupt anything that's working well. So if you have somebody who does Facebook for the police department and do a great job with it, we don't want to, you know, take that over, take that away, or step on any toes. We want to be a force multiplier. We want to be able to help, you know, take stuff off their plate if they're busy or, you know, be able to add, you know, things to make it look like they're job, doing the job of 10 people. So, you know, we can write the posts, the content, you know, if, if there was an idea for like a social media campaign or something like that. For one of our police clients recently, they were getting a lot of complaints of people speeding through town. And so, you know, we had the idea to put together a social media campaign to, you know, tell people that there was going to be increased traffic enforcement throughout the town over the course of the next month. We put together several social media posts and put together different graphics and stuff like that that they could post. I think it was like one or two posts a week over the course of a month to help, you know, they, they posted on their town Facebook page, they posted on the police department Facebook page. And, you know, I believe that did help, you know, kind of get the word out there about this enforcement action, but also helped people to, you know, know to slow down a little bit. So that's just one example of, you know, how we could assist in that, in that effort. But, you know, they were still doing all their day-to-day kind of posting on their Facebook page. The other side of it is, and I, I guess I didn't mention this previously, but so our company has three divisions. So we have our PR division, which I've talked about. We have our digital marketing division, which is our website and video production and digital marketing materials and things like that. And then we also have a training division, which Keith touched upon, that we might be working with the schools on in a project with the police department. That digital marketing division, we, we have probably about 300 websites that we designed and hosted for communities, for departments within communities. And if you have a website through us, we are able to connect your social media channels to the website and also use the website as a home to house all of the content that we're producing for you, and we can post it directly to the website as well. So, you know, if, if, you know, I'm not sure if you folks are in the market for a website, but just to kind of answer the question, you know, if there was, if you had a website through us, you know, we could post all of the content that we're producing for you onto the website. You know, you would still own the website, you would have how, whatever level of access you want, admin access, all that type of stuff. But when we post a, you know, social media post or when we post a, you know, a press release or a website post, it's automatically being broadcast out to the different social media channels within town. So that would be another way that we'd be able to, to do that as well.
Any other questions?
I have some questions. So what other communities do you serve? You said small and...
Yeah, I actually have a list of, that I can hand out here, pass along, if you'd like it, or I can just go over it.
Or you just want to read?
Okay, so some of the municipal clients that we have in the region. So just so you're aware, our Canton office covers all of southern New England, and our North Andover office covers all of our clients in northern New England. So the clients that we have in this region that are municipal clients include Bridgewater, East Bridgewater, Middleborough, Marion, Canton, Dayton, Dover, Dennis, Rentham, Norfolk, Plainville, Swansea, Hopkinton, Ludlow, and Blackstone. And then some other clients that we have that are, you know, somewhat nearby that aren't municipal, like whole municipality clients, include the Plymouth Fire Department, Carver Police and Fire, Bourne Public Schools, Lakeville Police, Hall Police, Hall Schools, Taunton Police, Taunton Fire, Berkeley Police and Fire, Rainham Police and Fire, Easton Police and Fire and Schools, Rainham Police and Fire, and Stoughton Police.
Okay, thank you. Keith, if the board chose to move forward with this, where would this fall in the budget?
So I would have to make some sort of a budget transfer later on this year. And, and I would propose to have the funding for this come out of the Selectman's, Selectman's budget. So if there was, if there were surplus funds in that budget, I would be able to cover some of the cost. There will be, there will be budgetary savings throughout the budget, as there always is, that would be able to be transferred into the Selectman's budget later on this year to cover the expense. Again, we're talking 18, just under $18,000. So if, if we find that it's not working for us in a year, we can suspend service. If we find that it's more successfully expected, we could always look at, you know, expanding the number of hours.
I mean, I think it sounds like a great idea. It doesn't feel like level services to me. And with a year leading up to what I'm going to try to avoid a prop two and a half override, I, I can't in good conscience say yes to something that adds something to our budget right now. It sounds great.
I, I would say we could help with the communication around an override.
I don't want an override, though. So I'm trying to avoid one.
Fair enough, yeah.
So I understand if we are in a position where we are forced to have one, having a PR firm would be great.
Sure.
I'm trying, me personally, I'm not speaking for the board, I'm trying to avoid one. Which means I have to go to department heads and say, you have to provide level funded, right? I'm not, that's, I'm one person, I'm not saying that, everyone listening, I'm one person, I'm not saying that's a directive. But if I, I can't in good conscience say to them, we can't increase your budget, but we've added an $18,000 expense that didn't go before town meeting and didn't go before finance committee. So I, I can't support this at this time. If we want to bring it to, to finance committee to look at and as part of our budget in the future, fine. But currently, I would, I can't vote yes on this.
I'd be, I mean, I think it's a great proposal. I think I'd be more apt to voting a yes on it if it was in the fall town meeting or spring town meeting. I mean, I think that's kind of what you were getting at too, Cam, right?
Not right now, in this meeting, today.
What I'm saying is, I think if this was, I think if, if this was a line item in our, in our town meeting, whether it's fall or spring, I'd be, I, I think it's great. I mean, I come from, I, I come from media PR world, and I think we need it. I think we need assistance from the police and fire. Not because you guys aren't doing a great job, but because it's not your job. It's, it's a job that compounded upon a job, right? And in other areas, I think we could use it as well. I think it's, unfortunately, to me, it seems like the start of a conversation, not the end of the conversation. And I don't mean, you know, that's just, to me, it seems like, I, I read this and I go, this is awesome. This is great. This is actually kind of my world. But I kinda, I kinda want to see this brought before the body as, as far as fall or spring town meeting as a budget item.
Sure.
Any other comments, questions? Sam, do you want to make a motion?
And if we don't, it just moves on, yeah?
Right.
Have we been doing it on the, well, we've been, approved versus not, I'll, I'll just, okay. I move the Board of Selectmen approve entering into a one-year contract with John Gilfoyle Public Relations at a monthly cost of $1,499 per month.
You're voting that we approve.
Making the motion approve.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Hi. I'm approved.
All right, against?
None.
Nine.
But not because I don't want to work with you guys. I just want to be clear.
This is actually something we need.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, 100, I, I don't like voting against this. I just think it's one of those moments where I think we...
And I think we're going to need it for an override.
I think it sucks, it's, it's, it's government. And I don't want to be the person in that moment to say, this is the start of the conversation, but that's what it kind of feels like. But I think we can, I mean, I would love to work with you guys in the future. I just think we need to, I think this needs to go on to an agenda item or to, onto an article to town meeting.
Can I ask a quick question, too?
If there's any information I can provide to help in that process, please let me know.
Can I ask, does it have to be a full-year contract?
Uh, yes.
Okay.
Well, so, you know, I guess for, we, we could offer some flexibility in that, you know, if you wanted to try to bake this into your budget for next fiscal year, we could prorate from July 1st to now and basically start from October to, you know, July 30th or June 30th. That might help defray some of the costs if that's something that you were, you know, interested in. And then allow you to, you know, budget for us for a full year for the following fiscal year. Something to consider, so.
It's more, I'd want the, the line item vetted by our typical process.
Sure.
All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
All right, we're going to go backwards now to item number five. We don't have anybody here from OCPC, am I correct, online? I, I can't see from here. I don't have my magnifying glass.
No, I think they gave up about halfway through the public hearing.
Okay. So we're going to move to number five, the discussion of narrowing the traffic lanes on a portion of Main Street.
Are we going to do that number four in a different meeting, or are we just...
We're going to have to.
Yeah, we're going to have to do it in another meeting. Thank God, because we have so many other things to do. So in the board packet, we had a memo from the Towns Engineering Consultant Environmental Partners regarding reducing the lane width on a section of Main Street. Environmental Partners is recommending a holistic approach when considering a change in the profile of Main Street. So keep in mind, we'd had a report, I don't remember how long ago, but we had a report from OCPC where they had said we could use a road diet narrowing of the lanes to help reduce the speed along Main Street. I know there's some disagreement amongst folks about whether there's a speeding issue or not on, on Main Street. The residents have asked, as we know, for, for multiple ways of, of slowing the speed on Main Street. We've had studies that said that there wasn't as much of a problem as, as we think. And they also spoke to the chief about some various methods to slow down folks on, on Main Street. Originally, they wanted to cut down the speed limit. We didn't agree for, for multiple reasons. So this is just another way to potentially slow down the traffic without changing the speed limit sign. Chief, did you want to address anything? I think you...
Can I just add something to?
Yeah.
If you don't mind.
And before you do, I was just going to ask the chief just to give his input on this, but go ahead, Kim.
I just wanted to mention that I, I'm extremely frustrated with this because I felt like we already did a study and the study was, out of that study came a recommendation from OCPC to do the lane dieting. So I'm just frustrated that the recommendation is to now do a corridor study. I'm like, I thought we did that.
Did.
And I thought it presented the, I guess, I'm just frustrated because that was a recommendation from OCPC.
But keep in mind, they get paid for a study.
No, well, no, 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 no. Let me, let me just, if I could, before the chief speaks. OCPC, you know, studied the, the traffic information that was presented to us. And one of the options that is available is what they're calling lane dieting or narrowing the lanes. Our engineering firm, I asked the engineering firm to look into and, and take the information that had been developed, whether it be through the Kingston Police Department, Old Colony Planning Department, the report that was, that was issued, and asked them to, engineering-wise, do they, does, does narrowing the streets by some amount, is that, engineering-wise, is that supportable? Does, does it make the, the traveling on Main Street safe, efficient, and, and will it calm traffic? Or potentially slow traffic down? Again, I, I think what we heard from Old Colony Planning, and I certainly heard from the state of Massachusetts, MassDOT, was they could recommend increasing the speed limit to 40 miles an hour. But they understood the challenges locally that, that the Board of Selectmen would be facing if that were to have been recommended. There, there are certainly cars that travel faster than 35 miles an hour on Main Street. There are cars that travel 35 miles an hour, faster than 35 miles an hour on every street. The concern that was raised, and I got received a copy of an email or a letter that was sent by a Main Street resident earlier today, that seems to be more concerned about crossing the street than traffic. We've, we've tried to, we've attempted to address that by putting up pylons, making people aware that there are sidewalk, or crosswalks, excuse me, that you'll be coming near as you approach those. I know the police department has had a greater presence on Main Street to try to address the concerns that were raised by the residents. So Old Colony Planning suggested that one of the options would be narrowing the lanes. We then needed to check with our engineering firm to say, to make sure that narrowing the lanes would be something that, from a engineer's standpoint, is supportable to do.
So correct me if I'm wrong, but...
Based on the traffic, yes.
One of the things with the study that we're doing, we're looking at how fast people are actually going.
That's, that's...
And the speed is a cer, is X amount. By narrowing the lanes, it's going to, everyone seems to agree that it's not going to speed up traffic. It's probably going to slow down traffic. It's just the agreement doesn't seem to be how much. Environmental Partners says they think maybe between two and four miles per hour. I, I don't know where the data is that supported that, but that's what they're guessing.
Well, they're suggesting that the, the guidelines estimate a 4% to 9% speed reduction by narrowing traffic lanes. If you apply 4% to 9% to 35 miles an hour, that's two to four miles per hour.
So by doing that, that brings down the speed limit, which then the, they look at what, how fast people are actually going. So if they're not going 40 anymore, they're going the average speed, whatever it is, and I don't remember the terminology. So if they're not going forty anymore, they're going the average speed, whatever it is, and I don't remember the terminology. It's now thirty-six instead of forty, then that supports a lower
Again, I, I, I thought it was important to, we heard the concern that people wanted to see
Right.
traffic or, or speed calming on, on Main Street. So I, I, I could not, we cannot just narrow the roads by, by some amount. I needed to reach out to an engineering firm to have them look at the road layout and all the information that was gathered about speed, traffic, accidents, crosswalks, and all those types of things, and have them be able to tell me, based on all the criteria that double to us on Main Street, this is, if you wanted to narrow the roads, this is how narrow we think these, these travel lanes could be made, so
And it looks like one foot.
One foot on each side.
All right. So Chief, what, what did you want to say?
Not much. I was asked what I thought when I got here, shortly thereafter, and I told the board and the town administrator what I think. The, the board has the benefit of time. For all the work that's gone into this, you don't have to make any decision tonight, it's entirely up to you. I came up with a three-part plan, you've already acted on part one. I challenged the neighbors, all sixty, seventy of them that I first met in a meeting, that you have a role in this. And I haven't seen one sign go up that says, drive like your kids live here, slow down, anything like that. So there is some ownership that I think has been absent on the part of the neighbors. I'm sure I'm gonna get some phone calls tomorrow, and I'm okay with that. But, you know, I, I think there's something to be said, notwithstanding my three-step plan, one of, one step which is out of the way, there's something to be said for, for the input of the town administrator here. And I just, I don't think you need to take action on this tonight.
I agree, and I, I'm not saying that we should just paint the lines, it's just, I think from my perspective, I thought we did a study that then resulted in the recommendation of moving the lines in. And so I guess I was feeling frustrated that it just feels like we keep studying the same thing and not getting the results that
So I, what, so I could have put it, I could have put on an agenda, what does the Board of Selectmen want to have for width of traffic on, for traffic lanes on Main Street? And we could have had a two-hour conversation about how wide it should be with no, with absolutely no, you know.
No, but I think what they're saying, they're coming back, they're saying, yeah, you could do a foot, but then they're saying they recommend, so yes, we can do it, and yes, it should be a foot. But beyond that, they're saying, don't do it now, do a study.
Do a study, but the problem is, we did a study. So I guess, when, when does the study part end?
So we haven't done a study. We did it, we did, we reviewed the traffic
Okay.
that was, that was, that, that is currently traveling on Main Street for a period of time. When they talk about a study, a study is, what does the town of Kingston want Main Street to look like? If, if, if we were able to reconstruct that length of Main Street, what would we want Main Street to look like? How wide? Where would the sidewalks be? Where would the crosswalks be? Just a, a holistic approach. How would we deal with, with intersecting streets? A, a whole list of, of items, you know, we did, we asked Old Colony Planning to review the speeds on Main Street, and they came back with their information gathering and, and provided the documentation for that.
Sharing a little bit of Kim's frustration on this. Boiling it down, it seems a little bit like old county, old quality planning. We give us recommendations, but we then need actual engineering.
I need, so if, if we were, again, Old Colony Planning did not tell us how narrow the lane should be. I need to have somebody review the documentation, the information, the street layout, all those types of things to make a, a professional decision of how, how much narrow, if at all, these streets can be made. So the town isn't liable for making the streets too narrow, for example, and
Is this, but that's done now?
So they've said, if you want, without doing anything else, if, without doing a kind of a master plan of Main Street, their recommendation is to, if you wanted to narrow the streets, you could narrow them by a foot in each travel lane. And they believe that the, the data backs, you know, would, would support reducing it by a foot and not put the town at risk.
Would, would we pay for this? Was it five, five thousand dollars for that?
I think somewhere in that general area.
So the
Just to get that answer.
The environmental partners' presentation from July, the number one project that we should work on in terms of the road safety projects was Main Street, right?
I don't think so.
I have it right.
It is.
Okay.
Main Street, Route 106, every street to Route 3A. Project score was fifty-nine out of one hundred. So if that's our number one project, and it says it's a relatively low cost and low constructability concerns, I, I agree, it should be holistic. We shouldn't be doing one thing here and one thing there. We should be looking at the whole section, each of these projects. When we look at them, we should look at them holistically. So if this is something we want to move forward with, we shouldn't just be looking at lane dieting, we should be looking at whatever we need to be looking at. We're road commissioners, but we're not road experts, so.
I, I mean, I, I would have liked to have been able to talk to EP about it, Environmental Partners, and just, you know, where the, where the one foot comes from. Is it twelve inches, thirteen inches, fourteen inches, eleven, like, like, are those standard? Are, are there gray areas? Like, if we increase or decrease, like, what are the ramifications of it? Being a road commissioner with very little understandings of roads, I'd like to talk to my engineers and have an understanding of where we're going with that, but.
And just so you know, that four-page, the memo here that shows the cut screen of the road and all that, that was the result of a I don't want to call it a study, but that was a five thousand dollar
Oh, they, yeah, they did the engineering, I, I
And so the five thousand dollars is engineering, five thousand seven hundred and twelve is what it would cost to actually
And I just came off of a, a project with environmental, EP off of the Idina project, they're awesome. And every time we ask them a question, they give you the answer. They're, they're very, very good. I guess my, my questions are some of the gray areas, which I just, I wouldn't know unless I know.
The, the fifty-seven hundred is for actually doing it.
Yeah.
The striping. Which I thought Paul had mentioned in a previous meeting that this was up to be restriped anyways.
So it's been restripped.
He did it before this. Yeah. Okay. So this is redoing what was just done?
That was like a repainting though, it wasn't like they were blacked out.
Correct.
So, anyway.
Chief, what would you, so you're saying, we've got something in front of us, we should take a good look at it. The recommendation is to
Don't decide tonight.
Have, yeah, not to decide tonight, but maybe have a conversation, maybe bring in the engineers?
Yes. So the, the, the rest of the town to consider. I know you've asked me about it before, and I said that when I hear from other parts of town, I'm okay with that, but, you know, I, somebody said the word holistic, I think the town should be comprehensive. And again, I'm deferring to some of the things the town administrator said. You know, you don't have to act on this tonight. There's nothing wrong with taking the time, looking at the information, and getting it right. But again, we, we've, we've taken step one. Signs are gonna go up, we'll see if that has any impact.
I, I would like us to keep really good track of what we're spending on each little thing. So if we've already spent five thousand to Environmental Partners on this, if we're asking them to do something else, let's, let's, we need to keep a good track on, on, for each little project, how much we're spending.
So you're saying, measure, measure twice, cut once, versus, you know.
I learned that when I started learning carpentry, so, yeah, I think that's a great way to sum it up.
Or surgery, yeah, yeah.
One or the other.
Yeah. Two weeks?
So, so I just need, I, I'd like a little direction, I guess, on what you expect in two weeks. And you don't have to give it to me now, you can give it to me in the next week. But I, I just, I wanted to provide the board, whatever information you think is lacking, and if it means having Environmental Partners come here and have a conversation, I'm, I'm happy to ask them to do that. I just need to know what expectations or what needs you, you have for information, so I can satisfy those.
I don't need it for two weeks. I know we've got a full agenda on October twenty-second, because I think we're voting the warrant probably. But we had Environmental Partners give us this recommendation of a plan and prioritize all of these projects. We should figure out how we're getting started with any of these, so what that looks like, and, and if Main Street is the first, if that section of Main Street is number one project, what are we doing to kind of get that started? So I, I don't, I've not, I don't know if that means Environmental Partners coming, I don't know if that means, I don't know how we tackle that.
From my point of view, what, what I was, and we, and we talked about this a little bit with, with department heads today, you know, I believe if there's a study that needs to be done to look at something holistically, if Main Street's the number one priority, then we need to put in a capital improvement plan in the spring, the funding necessary to do that. And have the capital planning committee, the finance committee, the board of selectmen, and ultimately the voters decide whether they believe that's a good use of taxpayer funds. So the approach I was gonna take was, and the suggestion I had was to look at that in that, in that, in that manner. You know, fifty-seven hundred dollars is not gonna make or break the town of Kingston one way or another. But how I would approach, like I said, trying to address what the next steps are, is trying to, trying to afford appropriate money to pay for whatever needs the next steps are, which is a design.
I think it makes sense to look at it holistically, and, and I like the plan of putting it before capital planning and, and town meeting for, and finance committee, yeah, for voting. Time to meet, sounds like progress.
All right, I think, I don't think we need to, to vote. We can just move on. All right, so additional, what?
She said thank you, Chief.
Oh, yeah, thank you, Chief. Additional items, discussion, and we've got a lot to go, so I would say let's try to keep talk a little quicker. Discussion and possible
It's your meeting, buddy.
It is my meeting, so I'm gonna keep it moving. Discussion and possible vote to establish a school zone for the Silver Lake Middle and High School campus. Keith, do you want to intro this?
Sure, so. Thank you, teammates. As the, we've been trying to, we've been trying to establish a, a, a school zone now at the, at the request of the school department, I believe, or members of the school department. It's been a little bit longer of a process than I had hoped, but we're here. In front of you this evening is a school zone proposal that has been championed by, by both Paul Basler and Valer Masard. And we believe that, that it meets all the merits of a school zone. The board, as you have in your, as you have in your, in your agenda, a denim, I have to make a decision on hours. We've got a recommended hours for you to consider. And the next vote would be to fund the, the necessary signage that will be placed up on that school zone. Be trying to, be happy to try to answer any questions anybody has.
Does anybody have any questions?
I move the Board of Selectmen approve the establishment of a school zone on Route twenty-seven, Station Road, and Lake Street as presented this evening. The hours of the school zone will be six-thirty AM to eight-thirty AM, and from one-thirty to four-thirty PM, Monday through Friday.
Second. All those in favor?
I have a question.
Yeah. No questions.
Do those go whether or not school's in session? It's just because if it's school break or summer, it still is a school zone Monday through Friday.
I do notice the ones, because I do run through Plymouth a little bit, West Plymouth, they, they go, they go, okay.
Careful, there's a question.
It's also summer school, too.
There's a trip on the gun.
Typically, regardless if there's no school in session, not choice in school.
Okay, thank you. I was just curious if that mattered for the motion.
I don't know.
Very nimble.
Apparently it doesn't. It's really about the enforcement, so.
Very nimble lieutenant.
All right, so we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And thank you to everybody who did all the work behind the scenes on this. A quick vote from us, but it was not a quick process to get this done, so.
We know Val and Paul did a lot of work to this.
It was a lot.
Val's on it, thank you, Val.
Yeah, that's, it's a big feat.
Happy to read the next motion, too. So now we, we have a request to use ARPA funds for costs associated with the purchase of the school zone sign cost.
I'm sorry.
Requesting, he's requesting requesting authorization to expend ARPA funds to offset the cost of school zone signs, fifty-two thousand nine hundred and two dollars and seventy-two cents.
And how much is left in ARPA?
Nothing.
This will clean it out.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
All right, go ahead.
I move the Board of Selectmen approve the use of ARPA funds for costs associated with the purchase of school zone signs, sign costs in an amount of fifty thou, fifty-two thousand nine hundred and two dollars and seventy-two cents.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Very precise cost.
And it's too bad this wasn't done any years ago.
Cleaning out all of the ARPA.
When it should have been.
I know. All right, close special town meeting warrants. And before we close this, I just want you guys to know that, and Keith, I was gonna bring this up at the end of the meeting, but I should probably bring it up now. Sewer Commission is asking to meet with us. They want to put a article on the warrant. But we're still gonna close it, we can reopen it and put it on. We need to have a joint meeting probably with FinCom potentially, and with the Sewer Commission on some funding for sewer
Well, we don't have to reopen the, the warrant, just for the record.
I'm just saying, we can.
We can.
We can if we choose.
So I'm not holding off the closing of this.
We are pretty close to the deadlines of a lot of the stuff, so just keep that in mind.
So we'll probably discuss this later, but we need to try to schedule a meeting.
We can't reopen it, can we? We, we have time?
We've reopened it in the past.
We opened it like seven times last year.
I just mean
No, but with the window.
So we, just to give the board a sense of timeline, it's gonna be a challenge this year to, to Kim's point. FinCom is meeting tomorrow night, they're meeting next Wednesday night. If, if they have to meet at all. Capital Plan is meeting either next Tuesday, I think, or next Thursday night, they're not sure yet. This does have a financial impact, not so much on fiscal twenty-five, I don't think, but more on fiscal twenty-six, but it's still, I, I think the Sewer Commission is, may want to have some sort of decision. I, I met with, as the, as the Kathleen, the Finance Director, our treasurer, a handful of people, and I'm sorry to extend on this, I apologize, but just to give a little background, we met and talked to the, one of the Sewer Commissioners about what he was proposing and bringing this article forward, and it was counsel's opinion that the article did not belong on the town meeting warrant. Whether or not there's a willingness to change the article, or there's some
For, for fall timing, or just in general?
At all.
At all, okay.
So whether that changes or not, with modification to the article, I guess I don't know. But happy to have the conversation with the Sewer, Sewer Department, but we, we do need to have it sooner rather than later.
We, we do. So I, I think regardless, can you correct me, Kim, if we can close this, yes, town meeting warrant?
Is the, the playground repairs for the elementary school included in the capital equipment project funding?
They are.
Okay.
I move the Board of Selectmen close the November nineteenth, twenty-twenty-four special town meeting warrant.
Second.
Who got it? Aye.
Aye. Who got it?
I think Tyler got it. Sorry, he's, he's knocking on the window. Oh, that's your fault, sorry.
Thank you. Do I need to redo the vote?
You have to redo everything. Start from six PM.
All right. Discussion and possible establishment of a working group for available options for the replacement of streets, trees, and park superintendent. We discussed at the September tenth board meeting, the board voted to explore available organizational options prior to the beginning search for the process, search process for streets, trees, and parks superintendent. So we need to discuss appointing a working group to study the options. And as we talked about before, we may want to consider appointing a water commissioner, sewer commissioner, selectman, Paul Basler, and town administrator to the working group, although Paul is retiring.
So I spoke to Paul earlier this week, I think, or late, late last week, and he, as of late last week, was, was open to providing assistance.
Okay.
Are we missing police and fire? I don't want to sign them up for more than they need, but I do know they have to work really closely with Highway slash DPW, so I don't know.
I, I don't care. I mean, I, I don't, if they want
I mean, they're both sitting here, so I'm kind of looking at them, trying to figure out whether they
They're gonna, I mean, I, so my two cents would be, I, I'm happy to have them there. I, if we did the hiring process similar to how we've done in the past, I would want to have at least a couple of department heads be part of the interview panel. Just because they're, you know, the, the people have to fit with the people we have here, obviously. If you want to include a police or fire employee in this, more than Mary.
I don't know, I just wanted to make sure.
More than Mary might be a little, might be a little aggressive, yeah.
So are we saying yes or no?
I don't have a strong opinion, I just wanted to, they are here in the room, I wanted to give them the ability to say, yes, I really want to be included in that conversation, or not, so.
I don't see any hands flying.
It's fine.
She's here, too.
No, do you want to be on the working group to, to work on this project?
If you're not interested, it's okay.
Totally fine.
So the fire chief is added.
Yeah.
Wait, what?
It's kind of the two parts. First, the town picks what they want the position of. If you're looking for somebody to work on.
I know. You're getting, you're getting the pack TV. Gotta go to the microphone.
Yeah, sorry.
Or you gotta boom a little more.
If you wanna talk, yes, yeah.
That's good. That'll work.
We're gonna get you a headset when you come in.
I'm happy to work in a working group if you want me to, but I think it's, there's two parts to this. One, what does a position look like from what the town wants for the position? Two, who gets selected? Uh, I think it'll be appropriate for, um, I'm throwing them under the bus. The two of us to work together on, uh, the hiring part of it, I think, who is selected. Does that make sense?
Excellent. Thank you.
Somebody wanna make a motion?
Well, who's, who's gonna do it?
The, uh, with Brian and I differ slightly, um, is the resident component. I do feel very strongly about some of, of the stuff related to highway, DPW, and all that stuff. Not that I've made a decision, right? But part of my wanting to be involved in the process is part, a little bit fire chief, and to do with the hiring, like Brian spoke of. Uh, but the other part is, is as a resident, and, uh, I'm finding myself as I approach the end, kinda looking a lot more at.
The end, the end of what?
Career, career.
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 Career, I'm good.
All right, slow down a little bit.
We're good. But, you know, it's, there's four and a half years to go, and, um, sometimes you, you, you like to think of what you're gonna leave behind, honestly. And, uh, this is a big, important decision that we're gonna make, and, uh, I think I can bring something to that discussion based on the forty-plus years of experience. And I can bring something also to the hiring, like we did with Brian. I think that was a huge success. But that's why I think that's where we might differ a little bit, is I'm looking at it a little bit from the resident point of view. Thank you.
So can we, can it just be amended to if, if town administrator and or chiefs so choose to be part of this?
Well, the town administrator's
Obviously, he's going to.
The town administrator's part of the recommendation, so the question just was whether or not, and then who on the board wants to be the selectman representative? Because I think we need to do that too, right?
Don, are you interested?
I mean, I'm fully supporting a DPW only, so I'm probably not a good working group member, honestly.
Yeah.
That's, I, I, that's the only answer I will come to, so.
In other words, you're not objective.
Nope.
Okay.
So I, you know what, I'll, I would do it.
Hundred percent not objective.
You'll do it?
Yeah, I'll do it.
All right. Okay.
I'm, I'm willing to do it.
So, let me give this a shot. I move the board of selectmen appoint the following positions to the working group to study and recommend an available option to fill streets, trees, and parks. Wait, is that right? Superintendent? Yes, because that's instead, that or BPW is what we're talking about. To include a water commissioner, sewer commissioner, uh, a selectman, Paul Basler, the town administrator, and the fire chief.
Town administrator.
What?
We said town administrator.
I did.
Oh, you did, sorry.
And then, um, and further, that the selectman representative be Eric Crone.
Happily second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 All right.
Thank you for doing that process.
Yes, thank you. Next few should be quick and easy. So appointment of maintenance mechanic with streets, trees, and parks due to retirement. Uh, we have a position that is vacant after the recruitment process. Uh, they're requesting the lateral transfer of Alan Rash to the position. Motion?
I move board of selectmen, uh, appoint Alan Rash to the position of maintenance mechanic with the streets, trees, and parks department. This is an FY twenty-five, uh, grade A, step four, non-exempt position, part of the Kingston Town Employee Union Labor with anticipated start date of November fourth, two thousand twenty-four, consistent with the terms in, in the offer letter.
Do I have a second? All right, give a question.
I have a question. So that would leave the foreman position at the transfer station open, so we'd be, then be hiring for that?
We're already in the process.
Okay. And then second question, will this position potentially be certified in, um, working on the fire or police apparatus?
They, they are not now. We can look at it. The, the co- and I, my, chief, chief home, uh, chief Holmes, chief Douglas. I've had this conversation a number of times with, with Paul Basler, as I'm sure, um, Mark probably has as well. I understand and respect the concerns, that the, one of the things we need to look at is the significant cost of equipment that we would have to purchase a lot to, to set, to, to service some of these trucks. I, I don't think anybody's opposed to provide, to, to having the mechanic, uh, obtain some fire uh, specific vehicle maintenance type of thing, but I, I think a lot of this, some of the, some of the stuff is gonna be something that just isn't able to be done in the facility we have now.
Okay. So something we can at least look into and
Yeah.
if, if there are things that can be repaired
Absolutely.
because he's certified, then we would like to do that.
Absolutely. It'd be a savings to everybody, so we would try to take advantage of that. Yep.
That was my only question.
Okay. Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Now we have an acceptance of a donation and grant for the council on aging. Um, we have some donations. In addition to the donations, the COA was awarded a fifty-eight-hundred-dollar grant from Hannaford's. The COA is asking the board to accept, um, and they're listed in the motion. If anybody would like to make the motion.
I move the board of selectmen accept the donation of twenty-five dollars from Robert and Melody Tassinari, twenty-five from Gene Duffy, five thousand eight hundred from the Hannaford Corporation, CHEF Connection Health and Equity through Good Grant.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Now we need to appoint a selectman to serve as a signatory member of the Old Co- Old Colony Metropolitan Planning Council, the OCPC.
And, sorry, this is, so if you wanna nominate a board member, the, this is for the region. A Kingston selectman, if there was one who was interested, would be, would be placed into consideration with other communities represented.
Only if they're selected.
Just so you understand. So this doesn't put you on this committee. This puts you in a pool of people who may be selected for this committee.
I failed two years ago.
That's right.
So Tyler?
Yeah, I like it.
No, you, you get interviewed. That's what happened, basically.
I mean, I'll, I'll definitely beat you into it.
There you go.
I move the board of selectmen recommend Tyler Bouchard as the Kingston Board of Selectmen nomination for the Old Co- Colony Metropolitan Planning Organization, effective November first, twenty twenty-four to October thirty-first, twenty twenty-six. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Obstein.
Against.
All right. Recommendation from town clerk to approve and post a warrant for the state and presidential election for November fifth, twenty twenty-four.
I move the board of selectmen authorize the town clerk to post the, the November fifth, two thousand twenty-four state and presidential election.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All right. Appointment of the Kingston three-hundredth committee. Um, they have vacancies. Michelle Ballinger reached out and wants to be appointed.
I move the board of selectmen appoint Michelle Ballinger to the Kingston three-hundredth committee effectively immedi- effective immediately through the duration of events.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All right. Approval of new common, uh, vicu- vicuwalor.
Vicuwalor, vicuwalor.
That license.
I move the board of selectmen approve the common vicuwalor licenses for train wreck taco contingent upon, on final approval from the board of health and all the paperwork was.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. No meeting minutes. Town administrators report.
Everything's good.
Briefly, everything is fantastic. It's on the website. I did make a correction. The, the average monthly, I'm sorry, average quarterly uh, sewer bill, it, it's, it said monthly. It should say quarterly. That's been corrected. And there's a tremendous amount of information that if anybody's interested in, is on our website, and I'd be happy to answer any questions, either the board or the public has.
Was that significantly different than the chart from the, from two weeks ago?
It was a little bit different, and the reason for that, I believe, and the only reason for that is they used two hundred thousand dollars of free cash as a one-time revenue to reduce the impact.
Gotcha.
I see. That makes sense. Okay, thank you.
So we do need to, um, organize a meeting, I'm assuming, pretty quick. Like, no later than next week, yeah, with, with the sewer commission, and I believe we need to get finance committee involved. I don't know that they need to actually make it a formal joint meeting, but we need representation. This is.
Yep. I can, I can, I know, again, the finance committee is meeting potentially next Wednesday night. Uh, I, I think it's the chairman's hope that he can get the votes he needs tomorrow evening. And we're trying to get a capital planning committee meeting for either, I think it's either Tuesday or Thursday, because Monday is a holiday. And the, the chair of the capital planning committee, I believe, is gonna poll his members to find out, uh, which evening next week was, um, best for those members.
So in terms of the sewer commission joint meeting with them, I'll need to reach out to them to find an agreeable time for next week, but, um, for folks here, I think it would be better to be in person rather than a Zoom.
I don't, I don't know my schedule for next week right now from here.
Okay, so we can reach out via, uh, email to, to, to get, uh, availability, but I really, I, I kinda feel like it's, it would be important to be in person rather than a, a Zoom.
But if people are only available through Zoom, it has to be available either way.
That's true.
You can't force an in-person meeting. Ask Carl Pike.
Okay.
And we have to, we have to provide the.
Strongly encourage.
He tried.
Yeah.
I, so if you want me to, I, I'm happy to reach out to the, to sewer superintendent and try to get that
Okay.
options for, for evenings squared away. How early can people meet?
Three o'clock.
It depends, it depends on the day.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm much more available.
I mean, three o'clock's better than six o'clock or seven o'clock.
Wednesdays and Thursdays, I can't at all.
Okay.
Um, I'm, more than likely, I'm gonna be Zoom. I can't not be probably Zoom, because I'm.
You know what? I might end up having to be as well, because I, no, I'm I'm saying this now, I'm leaving Tuesday. I'm not coming back till Thursday night. I just remember that.
I've got pickleball, I've got Pilates, got a lot, lot going on here.
I have a work trip.
Yeah, I, I can't guarantee, I can't guarantee any day next week, so.
All right, we're gonna have to follow up with the email.
Let me see what I can find out.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right. I think that's it. Do I?
Any comments?
I have, I have some comments.
Go ahead.
You do?
Am I the only one? Uh, no, I just wanted to, regarding the media relations, uh, thing that you're going to kinda look further into, I guess, right? Can we also get the, it like cost around, I, I'm assuming the company that runs our website has consulting in, in the sense of enabling certain things, like I know when we originally launched, there wasn't an option to post to Facebook, but they were implementing it. So are there, can we get some pricing around a lot of, a lot of sma- yeah, how to better utilize it, because a good example is a department head that posts something to the website. Why should they have to be posting it to three different places when they can just launch it everywhere? That's just one example, but it would be good to probably get a.
There might be other features too.
Yes.
That we're not using that are available.
So one of the things that, um, we have access to through our current website provider is, um, up, an update every two or three years, and we're up for that now. So we've, we've had a tentative scheduled date to meet and have a conversation with them uh, because of a whole bunch of different things. We couldn't, we couldn't meet that day, but, but our intention is to update our website, the look and feel, it won't be a lot of the stuff, but it may be updates as far as technically as well, Don, just to, to your point of view to.
By all, by all means have that. If you wanna have me in it, I'm happy to attend.
I would, I would, I would ask if you would sit
I'll make a motion to.
Instead of me.
Do I have a motion to?
I'll make a motion to a adjourn.
At three o'clock in the afternoon.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everybody.